Good evening, everyone. I want to start the welcome to tonight's planning board meeting for April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Please start by joining me for the pledge.
Under the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Looks like we could have a lot of comments tonight, so just wanted to state we will be sticking to our three-minute limit to make sure everybody gets a chance. And if you share the concerns of a prior speaker, you don't need to repeat that, but just state, just share those concerns. During public comments, as usual, the planning board listens to and considers comments, but will not necessarily respond to them during the meeting. And questions should be directed to the board, not the applicant per se. All right, with that, first, I want to introduce the board members that are here tonight. We have one alternate board member, Bob Simpson, filling in for those on Zoom to hear, filling in for Sid. We have Steve Levaser and Sean McQueen, Rocco Romeo, Nicole Jarmati, myself, Carl Whitehead, and Peter Famelli is here tonight. So we have a board, a seven-member board tonight, along with our attorney Lisa Cobb and our engineering Bob Bozek and Rachel Peter, our secretary. All right, first up tonight is Interstate Distribution Services at nine hundred Duchess Turnpike. Come on down. Been here a few times.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board. For the record, my name is Taylor Palmer. I'm a partner with the law firm Cuddy and Vator on behalf of the applicant tonight. Tonight, I am joined in person by Andrew Freeman of New York Distribution Services Inc., as well as Michael Bodendorf, our engineer from Hudson Land Design. In the Internet stratosphere, we also have Emmett Marzon, who is our odor consultant for the application from Colliers, together with Rich D'Andrea, who is our traffic and parking consultant for this application. We are before you tonight for our continued public hearing on this application for a de minimis amended site plan in the applicant's proposed manufacturing and distribution operations within the existing industrial building at nine hundred Duchess Turnpike in the town's heavy industrial zoning district. As the board is aware, we have been before you all, and this has been on for public hearings since November of two thousand and twenty-four. Since we were last before you back in February of this year, the applicant has been in further communication with town staff, as well as the town's odor consultant in connection with the applicant's proposal. And we previously addressed the public comments from the November public hearing in our February and prior submissions to your board. Since that time, we've only seen one comment regarding the application. As is more detailed in our April second submission to your board, we took an even more robust look at the odor mitigation strategies that we are employing, which are on top of the best management practices that we had previously included in this proposal before you. Your consultant has reviewed that more than once and a few times to make sure we've got a lot of these ducks in a row. And importantly, as we've discussed with your board in great detail previously on this application, and as Andrew will speak to in just a minute, as it relates to these best management practices, the applicant is not proposing to cultivate or extract at this facility. If you recall, that was a very big conversation. We've self-proclaimed those limits on this application. So we've really gone to the heart of the issue with those, but we're not there, we're not done there. So as Andrew will touch on, and understanding there's a busy agenda for you tonight, the application is limited to the assembly of the finished goods, cannabis goods, labeling, boxing, and products, and distribution of those produced items. The so-called sunky smell that's caused by a specific terpene, that's not, we're not, again, cultivating or extracting. So even though the applicant's reports have addressed that perceived concern, won't be realized here. We did work with our consultants to develop an even more robust HVA system, HVAC system into this facility where none exists today, and associated mitigation, and importantly, ongoing maintenance and monitoring strategies that will add multiple layers of belts and suspenders, so to speak, at every part of this process. So as Emmett and Andrew will speak to in just a moment, on top of those best management practices, the applicant has agreed with the town's consultant to onboard the system. So when this process were being completed with your board, the town's consultant and our odor consultant would be involved in the building permit development of those construction plans. So it doesn't just end with your board. That also continues through, as we proposed in our submission, during the construction process. So when this system is being built out, the town's consultant will be seeing that process. That's part of our proposal. And wait, there's more. In addition to the ongoing best management practices, the applicant is also committed to reporting how the system works. So we're not done with the buildup, the construction, the monitoring. We're self-imposing and reporting obligations or operations, again, these were suggestions of your board and the consultants, and not to say that we're committed to that because they were suggestions by all the town staff and otherwise. So we'll be providing those comments and consultations during the first year of those operations. But as they would say in those infomercials, but wait, there's more. As Emmett and Eric will touch on at CPL, the applicant has also agreed to install sensors. So while there's best management practices that say X filter should be replaced at Y time, we're also proposing to install sensors that would say, okay, even though it should have been done at one month, maybe it's April twenty-ninth, and it triggers the sensor, it's got to be replaced now. So we're incorporating yet another layer to ensure that sort of ongoing maintenance and operations is satisfied. So at the end of the day, while the smell will not be an issue, the system that we've designed will help further mitigate any potential concerns or issues in that regard. So with that, I'll turn to Andrew to kind of walk everybody through where we were and where we're going, and then Eric can kind of give us the science to put on top of all that.
That sounds good. And I saw that you saw the text, you were going to stock the filters outside, the extra ones, so you don't have any issues of having to order and backup.
Exactly. Good evening, my name is Andrew Freeman. I'm an executive at New York State Distribution Services, leading the development of this facility. A pleasure to see you all again. When we first came in front of the board in November of last year, we came to you alone as New York State Distribution Services. We are confident in our track record and the negligible impact that we knew we'd have on this industrial site, but also we were a little naive of the responsibility we had, not only as neighbors, but as leaders in a brand-new industry that happens to be burdened by a lot of old stigma. At that meeting, what we heard was a lot of uncertainty and a strong desire for independent science-based information and solutions. So we did spend the last five months engaging these top experts in their fields to consult on, advise, create, and vet our systems for, sorry, let me get that over there, for security and odor mitigation. We found the team that wrote the book on cannabis odor and brought them in to assess our operation with a state-of-the-art smell study. We took that info, as well as our architectural plan, to one of the nation's leading engineering firms to propose a best-in-class odor mitigation plan for the building. We shared this odor mitigation plan with the board and had it reviewed by your independent engineering consultant, who suggested more improvements, which we've implemented. And on top of that, we're working with the Town of Poughkeepsie Police Department, reviewing every aspect of our security plan and making changes, which they've approved and endorsed. We came here alone, but we're leaving with a really big team. I want to say this, the project is better because of the questions asked by the board and the community, and through the science-backed solutions provided by this incredible team of experts and specialists here. Thank you. I want to give you a few updates on where we landed. First, and I'm sure some of you are sick of this, but a quick reminder of what we are and what we are not. The primary functions of this site are for product packaging, wholesale distribution, and administrative offices. There'll be absolutely no indoor or outdoor cultivation at nine hundred Duchess Turnpike and no extraction at nine hundred Duchess Turnpike. As discussed, these are the two processes that generate the most cannabis, the odor in the lifecycle of cannabis. This is actually enshrined in the site plan moving forward. The allowed use of the site does not include either the extraction or cultivation of cannabis or any other plant or product. We can't do these things at this site, period. I want to bring everybody up to speed on the odor mitigation plan. A quick recap, as we already presented the results of this study in depth at the last meeting, but these experts that we engaged from Biocientific literally wrote the book on cannabis smell, they published a paper in a peer-reviewed journal identifying for the first time the culprit of that skunky cannabis smell, and found that it's not a terpene like we previously discussed, but a thiol, a gaseous sulfuric offput. So we knew what we were looking for with them. We hired them to come and take smell measurements, and as they analyzed these emissions from inside our building, they found that it lacked any of those sulfur compounds, which is aligned with the team's past experience, that they've never seen these sulfur compounds on tests from manufacturing and processing activities, only cultivation and extraction.
So when you say inside the building, you mean an existing facility?
Exactly, exactly. Outside of the building, and also, we did do a base reading inside of the empty nine hundred Duchess Turnpike facility. In both of those places, there were no, both outside our existing facility, in the outside, and inside the new facility that is not operational, there are no thials or terpenes detectable in these places. And this is where obviously there's no odor mitigation currently in place. So of course, we brought this data to another set of experts at Colliers. We charged them with interpreting the results within the context of our floor plan and industry best practices to design a best-in-class odor mitigation plan for us. We discussed this as well in our last meeting, but it includes both the initial things we talked about, like pressure controls and carbon filters, as well as some new cutting-edge technologies like bipolar ionization and photocatalytic oxidation. All of this is being tracked through what's called a building management system, or BMS, that allows for real-time monitoring and alerts as well. Now, then, Colliers collaborated with the Town of Poughkeepsie's engineers at CPL to make the project even better. As Taylor mentioned, adding some sensors that can measure and make sure all of these filtration systems are in tip-top shape at all times. Luckily, we'll be building this system from scratch, we're not retrofitting existing equipment, so we have the opportunity to ensure that this technology is embedded from the design stage onwards. And this isn't just a commitment or a nice-to-have, this is a condition of the project approval, as we're discussing it now, that we will continue to fund an escrow account for the town's odor consultant to continue to review and approve designs through every step of this process. We'll continue to engage Colliers Engineering and Design throughout the design and construction phases. The Town of Poughkeepsie and their consultant, CPL, will review and approve all design plans before building permits are issued, and be able to inspect during construction and before a certificate of occupancy is granted. And lastly, once these systems are finalized, because right now we're still planning the HVAC loads and all of that, it's going to take a little time to figure out what the exact pieces were, but once all of that is approved, then the specific procedures and schedules for maintenance, monitoring, and reporting will also all have to be approved by the town and the town's consultants.
Yep, that's a key aspect.
Key aspect. It's important for us, and it's important for, I think, everyone's peace of mind. Here's the thing, we thought that we were experts in running our business, and, but we've really learned so much from these scientists, from these engineers and professionals that are making our business better and that will make this project better. At a certain point, we have to trust science, and we have to trust the professionals that speak truth over fear. I hope this update has displayed our commitment to implementing a plan based on scientific best practices and common sense. We know that this is a new industry. We're committed to continuing to be collaborative, open, and educational in our approach. You have my personal number here, as does anyone online or in the audience, to ask any further questions.
All right, thanks, Andrew.
Thank you.
And for the benefit of the board, we know you have your, or we believe your consultant is also likely in the Zoom world. I will have our odor consultant, who's also in that same Zoom world, just speak briefly to the science of what we're sort of, I know we've done a lot through Andrew's presentations, so we'll try and keep it brief, but just to how, the discussions that they've had with your consultant as it relates to this, the operations.
Right, I know they've had some back and forth.
Yes.
So that'd be good to hear publicly.
All right, Emmett.
Again, my name is Emmett Marzon. I'm a registered professional engineer representing Colliers Engineering and Design. I was prepared, I was involved in preparing the odor report, where our primary role was to review the Biocientific study, evaluate odor control measures, and recommend technologies for this facility. I'm here to provide a brief update on the odor mitigation system from our original report and letters from February twenty-fourth, March twenty-fourth, and March twenty-eighth. We worked with the town's consultant, CPL, to finalize the odor monitoring and maintenance plan, or not finalize it, but all the finalization all comes during the design process, but we've worked through the preliminary plan to address any concerns. So the one last comment that CPL had was they wanted a VOC sensor installed. So we're proposing placing VOC sensors upstream and downstream of each exhaust carbon filter bank. This will satisfy CPL's monitoring concerns. These will be tied to the building management system with alarms intended as a diagnostic tool to detect filter breakthrough, again, as requested by the town. CPL will also be engaged throughout the entire process. They'll be engaged during design reviews, system commissioning, establishments of set points, submittal reviews, the monitoring plan itself, a maintenance plan. This will all be a coordinated effort with CPL's input. Again, this is a belt and suspenders approach. This sensor, which is kind of like the last step, is in addition to all the previously proposed measures that were also approved by CPL, including photocatalytic oxidizers, bipolar ionization units, interior filtration, sealed, gasketed doors, airlocks, pressure controls, air curtains at the exterior door, again, a maintenance plan for all of these items, having spare filters on hand. You know, these sensors will alarm the facility operators when filters need to be changed or when there's a problem with equipment. And then, again, Colliers will be involved as like a, you know, in conjunction with the PE of Record as a third-party review, and then we will also be involved to help commission the system. So, yeah, CED and CPL have reviewed and support this holistic approach with the sensors added as requested by CPL as an added tool, if necessary, to help troubleshoot any unanticipated odor issues. The owner is on board with implementing all of our recommendations, despite the cost, and they're committed to our strategy.
Thanks, Emmett.
All right, thanks, Emmett. Anything further?
That's it, Mr. Chairman.
That's good. Thanks for your presentation tonight. Go to Kristen.
Okay, great, yeah, thank you. I'm not going to say much more, it was pretty thorough, but just as a matter of record, the application is on for a public hearing this evening. For secret purposes, it is a type-two action. As far as site plan goes, real quick, I will note, there had been some traffic engineering review as part of this application review previously. All the traffic engineers' comments have been addressed. As far as site plan and the planning department's review of this application, there are, we're down to a set of notes on the plan. There's, we will have our town planning board council, town engineering, and planning staff review notes and work with the applicant. We've had instances where we've done this with other applicants, it's pretty standard, just get the notes on the plan, it's another way of enforcing anything that isn't followed. So we're still gonna, they've committed to the process, but the notes themselves will work through potentially any additional language text changes. And then, just, I know that, I don't know if there's an update on the licenses, if you wanted to just speak to that for a minute.
Yeah, absolutely. So as they stand now, our licenses, while past their expiration date, are still active while the state reviews the application process. We are very confident in the next steps towards application, towards our licensure here. It is, should be coming within the next, as you know, with government agencies, this is a brand-new one. This is a brand-new government agency with a lot of new rules. There's a lot of questions still about different business structures and ways things are moving. So it's not as simple as a paper being moved or something being misplaced. It is something, however, that is coming up for review again shortly, and we should have an update at the beginning of May.
I think importantly for the benefit of the board, we'd be accepting of some sort of a condition that, you know, conditioned on the subject of occupancy, that this not, that this CO not be granted until the.
Absolutely.
Something to that effect.
It's a definite requirement.
Of course, yeah, yes.
I just want to give everybody the cover that notwithstanding that, or we understand that would be a condition.
Condition of site plan.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so that's not atypical to some of the retail dispensaries we've had, too. They've received special use permits at the town board level and then come to this board while still waiting to hear from the Office of Cannabis Management, and then have subsequently been asked to provide that documentation to us before we signed off on anything. So just wanted to share that with you all.
Question?
Thanks, Kristen.
What kind of license did you have that's outdated?
So there's a condition, initially, there was a process in which initial hemp farms were granted conditional licenses, which is what is currently still active that is now outdated, our conditional license. We've since restructured and sent in applications for permanent licensure under the same kind of business entity structure for essentially the operations of manufacturing and distribution as separate, which we are entitled to. This is more of a, they're figuring out exactly how to grant them the way that we have requested them.
Okay.
All right, Bobby, any remaining engineering comments?
Site plan-wise, the only thing outstanding is health department approval, which can be, you know, dealt with as a condition, which it's relatively minor, they're just adding the grease trap, so the work itself is pretty minor.
I think we established what's in the effluent and stuff, it's not an issue.
And then also, Mr. Chairman, there is our odor consultant, Eric Mattson, is on Zoom. If there are specific questions related to the mitigation that was proposed and the building maintenance and monitoring, and so you do have resolutions before you to open the public hearing, hear a comment, discuss the application, you can either adjourn or defer. So I just, you know, I leave that to you to discuss as a board. If you have additional questions, obviously, we can go from there.
Yep. All right, thanks, Kristen. We go to Eric, our CPL consultant, to respond to Emmett's overview, and see if you have any further comments on that, Eric.
It's hard to do any better explanation. I think Andrew did a good job, and Emmett as well, trying to characterize without repeating everything you just said, that there, it's an exceptionally robust system that they are proposing to put together to mitigate any potential orders coming from the facility. They're essentially applying all the best practices that are available and applying it to a facility that, based on our experience, has a fairly low probability of having orders even without any odor mitigation. So they're applying a whole lot of really good technology, and from our, you know, we've reviewed it, and our opinion is, is this is probably, you know, the best you could possibly put forth in order to ensure there will be no fugitive orders from the facility.
Okay, thank you, Eric, for reviewing it. At this time, I move to open a public hearing.
Second.
Moved in second, it all in favor?
Aye.
opposed, motion passes, seven to zero. Uh, there's a sign-up sheet for start off, so Amanda Evans is the first one signed up. Amanda? I think I'm gonna try to... Oh.
Hello?
We'll have, uh, we'll have you in second.
Okay. Good evening, members of the board, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Amanda Evans, I'm a lifelong resident of the town of Poughkeepsie. I grew up and I still live at 174 Overlook Road. I'm also one of the first employees of the New York State Distribution Services. I care not only about our company's growth and success, but also to become a meaningful part of the community in which we operate where I grew up. We're excited to create local employment opportunities, we also bring energy to the local economy, from working with local suppliers to being Eastdale customers who will shop, dine, and do business in town. I'm already a regular at Barboo. I'm proud to be able to build a career in the town I grew up in, and I hope to have the opportunity to continue to grow here as this company grows. Thank you again for your time and for all the work that you do to make this town a place where people are proud to call home.
Alright, thank you, Amanda. Uh, I think Richard, you got Richard, uh, Richard Cantor?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Richard Cantor. I gotta defer briefly to, uh, Jeff. Something, I'm gonna stand. Send it back to your comments.
Do you want the microphone, or are you gonna be speaking afterwards? Cause we can get you the microphone as well.
I'm gonna be speaking afterwards.
Okay, so, Jeff, do you wanna... Jeff, Jeff knows the process.
A little warm up, right?
Yeah, let it warm up, it's gotta warm up, absolutely. Okay, it's good, you can, you can pass it.
Uh, thank you, um, Mr. Chairman and Board, again, just for the, for the record, I'm, I'm Jeff Kane. I'm here representing, uh, Eastdale Village, as you, as you probably know, Eastdale has more than a thousand residents and more than forty businesses immediately adjacent to, uh, to the, the applicant here. Um, uh, we're their neighbors, um, and as you know, um, neighbors need to work together. I, I'm, I'm, I'm unhappy I'm here tonight because, uh, we believe that, um, uh, this, uh, this could have been avoided. Um, we have, um, taken substantive efforts over the last weeks and months, uh, to reach out to work with this applicant, uh, to come to some resolution, um, that we think would, um, would, would protect Eastdale. And simply, there's been a, a lack of dialogue, um, I will say, not for our lack of, uh, lack of trying again, 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 and again. Um, I, I'll also say, I wanna, we appreciate what this board has done, uh, with this applicant, truly provide a lot of illumination on what the, uh, what the project entails, uh, as, as, as they admit, they, it was, it was somewhat opaque when it started, much more is known now, and you've come a long ways with, uh, with, with, with a program to address potential issues. We remain concerned, our concern is the potential for odors from this project to impact Eastdale Village residents, businesses, neighbors. Sensors fail, things change. Um, this is an interior process, site plan really, for the most part, deals with a, an exterior process. Eastdale's here forever, um, what we have been looking for is some enduring protection. If everything is, uh, is, is as good as they profess, it shouldn't be an issue. We should be able to get to, uh, to, to an accommodation. We're reasonable people, we have reasonable requests, um, but without dialogue, we can't Again, this antagonistic process, it could have been resolved. Um, and once again, the ball is in their court, um, uh, to help bring this process to some closure, which will keep Eastdale protected, keep the residents protected, uh, and keep the town protected. Uh, again, that's our goal, so I will, I will, and turn it over to, uh, to, to Richard, um, to, to proceed from here. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
For, for the record, Richard Cantor with the firm of Tean and Constantino, excuse me, my, my voice is a little fuzzy from all the medications, I was supposed to help the pain, but don't seem to do a very good job. I want to begin by briefly explaining why our firm is appearing before you today. In our opinion, this use is not permitted in the IH district. It's not permitted for two reasons. The first reason is a text reason, the text of the code. The language of IH says that if a use is not spelled out in the IH zone... Excuse me, one minute. Okay, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
The, the text of the IH district says that if a use is not spelled out as being permitted. Okay? Richard, wake up. I'm sorry, I'm just waiting for my legs and back to ease up for a moment. Okay, I'll try one more time, maybe the pills will work. The text says if a use is not permitted, and if there is an existing building on the parcel, then the proposed use is prohibited. Okay, there is no spelling out in the IH or the light industrial which is incorporated in the IH of this use. And there is an existing building, they're proposing to go into the existing building. So, the text, the text of the IH zone leads to the conclusion that this use is not permitted. Secondly, in addition to the text, there is a significant environmental review issue, which Bonnie will speak about in a moment. We have a writing to submit to the board, which spells...
How do I get this guy over?
Alright, hold up.
Oh, mine.
Do you want to take it forward?
Yes. Yes.
Our email address, got you in there?
Yeah.
Okay. We haven't had that happen in a while.
Time to give up on these hybrid readers and go back to normal.
Alright, so, yeah, the first and last person left.
I hope that something like that happened.
We were hacked.
Okay. Okay, sure. Alright, can I put us on, or, yeah, okay. Alright. Okay, alright.
To run it on the system, it has to go through the platform he has it set up on.
Yeah, and keep that.
So, what we do is we, um...
Yeah.
Yeah, it's gone.
Okay.
They're all muted, so if something like that happens again, it should, they're all off, it should be okay.
Okay. Yep. Alright, thank you.
You're welcome. So, you just get rid of it. I just heard the word.
Ironic timing, isn't it?
Okay. Alright. Anything further, Richard, or were you...
So, to repeat, our first point feels...
Yeah, hold the micro...
In our opinion, this is not a permitted use, a reason of the language in the IH zone. As a second reason, the IH zone is subject to the performance standards, and we are annexing to our submission a report from Tim McCauley, who is a recognized expert in the fields that we're discussing, who will offer his opinion that this use violates the performance standards to a level that the use is not permitted under the category of obnoxious or noxious that's spelled out in the code. In addition, it's, it's, it's our assertion that if the use were permitted, that it is subject to seeker review, it's not correctly type-two, and with that, I'm gonna turn this over to Bonnie Franzen, who knows a lot more than me, who's gonna tell you why.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Bonnie Franzen. Uh, for the record, I'm a planner and a partner with Nelson Pope and Borhees, and we're an environmental planning consulting firm representing municipalities like yours throughout the Hudson Valley. I was asked to review the applicant's submission, proposing to reuse and convert this forty-five-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifty-square-foot, uh, of space to a cannabis manufacturing industrial-type operation. The use has been classified as a type-two action, uh, because it's been identified as one involving the reuse of a residential or commercial structure, um, where those uses are permitted, uses are allowed by special use permit, and where they don't exceed a seeker type-one threshold. The proposed use is not a residential or a commercial use, it's been represented as an industrial manufacturing-type use. New York State DEC explicitly excluded industrial manufacturing-type uses when it created this type-two category. In 2018, when the seeker regulations were amended, including the addition of this type-two action, the DE, the DEC prepared a GEIS to evaluate the impact of these amendments. The FGEIS prepared by the DEC explicitly states industrial uses are not included in this type-two action. I have brought a, a copy of the FGEIS to, to provide for the record. In explaining the exclusion, the DEC states, "In the case of industrial uses, they frequently involve processes that user store hazardous chemicals, require permits for air and water emissions, result in fugitive emissions of non-regulated compounds, um, and make require new infrastructure to store or treat water and air emissions. Industrial uses have a greater range of potential impact issues that are more difficult to predict when compared to residential and commercial activities." This industrial project is subject to seeker. At a minimum, the project is an enlisted action, but we believe and we've concluded that this is more likely to be a type-one action. The project is on a property that adjoins town recreation parkland. It's also substantially contiguous to properties that are eligible for listing on the National Register of Historic Places. The type-one threshold for a non-residential industrial-type activity adjoining recreational land or adjoining historic properties is twenty-five thousand square feet. The type-one threshold is reduced to twenty-five percent. The project exceeds this threshold, making it a type-one action and requiring coordinated seeker review. My letter that I'm going to provide to you identifies several potential significant adverse impacts which may occur as a result of this project, but the full range of impacts is unknown because seeker review has yet to be undertaken by the planning board. A robust seeker environmental review is needed to assess what are the baseline conditions of the environments within which this project will be located, disclose the project's potential impacts, and then ensure that the project does not have a significant adverse impact on Eastdale Village and environs. Thank you.
So, what is it what we're asking of the board this evening? First thing is we're asking that you continue the public hearing while you evaluate the information you're being given. Second, we are unaware, unaware if any use determination has been made by the zoning administrator. Under the Poughkeepsie Code, the use determination is not made by the planning board, it's made by the zoning administrator, and if the neighbors, us, or the applicant is unhappy with that determination, uh, they, they can, uh, challenge it, uh, but the first point is to get a use determination. Anybody unhappy with that determination, who wants to challenge it, needs to go to the ZBA to challenge it. Does anybody here know whether a use determination has been made? Mike?
Yes, there has been, because the application was forwarded to the zoning administrator as part of our routine site plan process, so if her comments did not include a question about the use, it is permitted.
So, your statement is the absence of a comment is...
She often raises concerns when there is a, when there is one, and there's not, she has not in this case, so that is our, that was our determination, yes.
So, I just wanna...
Richard, you heard exactly what I said, I'm not changing, that's exactly how we do it.
That's how you do it.
Yeah.
But the question is, is that how it's supposed to be done? Mike, she's supposed to issue a determination.
The determination is, the, the reason we have the process we do is because we want to make sure that the zoning administrator, like the other departments, have an opportunity to review the code.
I don't mean to be wise, but under this system, when you distribute it to her, she thinks it's a permitted use.
No, she does not.
She doesn't think that is a permitted use.
No, she does not. That's not, her, her job is to look at, to see if it is a permitted use, she looks at it against the zoning code.
So, I just wanna get clear, cause there are timing issues here, Mike, I'm not being wise, but is your assertion that the zoning administered by her lack of any further responses approved use?
Correct.
Okay, is there any writing on that from her review?
The first comments for this application were at the December planning board meeting, I believe, right?
November.
November?
November.
So, that would have been when?
Right, but I didn't see any comment from her on use.
They're in the package?
Yeah, I read the package.
Okay. She said she, she said what then? She said there was no comment about...
Back in November's package.
Right, in November's package.
She didn't say it was a permitted use.
She doesn't say that about any project.
I'm trying to remember what she said, uh, but it's a hard question, Mike.
We can go back and look at that.
Yeah, we'll look at that, but I think the point is that if she has an issue with the use or a question about it, that's when she raises it, that's why she's looking at it.
Okay, I heard you, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me, but, but I heard you. Uh, with, with that, uh, we ho- hope that you will review the information we've given you, we hope that you will undertake a seeker review. The board, over the last several years, has had a hand-in-glove relationship with Eastdale, and has helped Eastdale be what it is, a proud new development in the town, and we acknowledge the assistance... And we acknowledge the assistance of the board, and we thank the board. And because the board has taken this position of helping produce Eastdale, we ask that you consider our concerns, including this discussion that you and I have just had, Mike, about how a non-answer is an answer. That being said, I hope you will continue the public hearing. I hope you will review the material that you have. I suspect the applicant will want to have a word or two about what we've said. And if you continue this matter, we will see you in a month or two or whenever you choose to continue it, if you do choose to continue it. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Richard. And for some of the other people who wish to comment as well. Next one up is Victoria.
Mike, how's the best way?
Lisa will grab it, we'll distribute it. Thank you.
Victoria, how do you say your last name?
Diara Ujo.
Thank you. What was that? Sorry?
All right, thanks, Victoria. Go ahead with your comment.
Good evening. Thank you again for giving me the space to speak. My name is Victoria Diara Ujo, and I'm the head of kitchen operations. I've lived in Eastdale Village for nearly a year, not just as a tenant, but as a proud resident, loyal customer, and active member of this community. The shop owners here know me by name. I've brought my friends, family, and coworkers here. I walk these streets every day, and I never stop talking about how special this place is because I live it. But tonight, I'm speaking from a deeper place because this isn't just about a permit. This is about passion, potential, and perseverance. I studied right here in Duchess County at the Culinary Institute of America. I've poured years of my life into building this kitchen from scratch. I never would have imagined I would get to call Poughkeepsie home after graduation, but HPI made that possible with all the opportunity they have offered me. Today, my role is more demanding than ever, yet I'm still working out of a smaller space than this very room. One of the biggest misconceptions is smell. Since I deal with the kitchen, I have the best insight on this one, so let me break it down for you. I actually used to cook cannabis in my mom's kitchen when I was eighteen, and trust me, it reeked. I got in a lot of trouble for it, but today we do things very differently. A commercial cannabis kitchen does not cook with the flower of the cannabis plant, like I used to do. We work exclusively with cannabis distillate, an oil that is highly refined off-site, over ninety percent THC, and contains little to no aroma. It's actually called the odorless cannabis extract because the plant compounds responsible for the smell are completely removed. It's clean, clear, and mess-free. We gently fold it into our confections. That's it. You won't see it, you won't smell it, and you definitely won't hear it. As the closest living resident to the proposed facility, I see it from my window every single day. I already hear the four AM trucks from other businesses, and it doesn't bother me, nor does it wake me up. Thankfully, New York State Distribution Services only accepts deliveries during business hours. I am extremely grateful for this, and I'm sure you all will be as well. I signed up for this community. I embrace it. I support the businesses here, and we will bring even more employees who would do the exact same. I remember when Eastdale Village was first proposed, people doubted it then too. But look at what happened. Eastdale created several jobs and raised land value significantly. A project once called "too much" has become this town's heartbeat. We want to be the next Eastdale. We come with a vision, a record of success, and deep love for this community. You don't have to like cannabis to support jobs, and you don't have to use it to benefit from a thriving local economy. Just like you don't have to drink alcohol to live near a bar or go to the Eastdale Community Gym to benefit from a healthy community. So tonight, I'm not just asking you to approve this facility. I'm asking you to believe in it, just like you did with Eastdale, even when those did not believe. Let us show you what's possible. Let us be the next success story, and let us build something that matters. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to share my passion once again.
All right, thanks, Victoria. Next one signed up is Daniel Moscara. I'm not sure if I said that right, sorry.
Daniel Moscara.
Okay, close.
Good evening. My name is Daniel Moscara, and I'm a proud resident of Eastdale Village. I'm also one of the first employees, and now an executive at New York State Distribution Services, a licensed cannabis distribution company right here in New York. I've been with this company since day one, and from the very beginning, I knew this wasn't just a job. This was going to be my purpose. Back in 2019, my brother invited me to move to Poughkeepsie. I didn't come here with much, but I did come with a dream. A dream to build something from the ground up, to create something real, something impactful, and to do it the right way. When we first started growing hemp, it was hard to miss. You can see, and yes, smell, the fields right off the tachonic. Some people were excited, others had questions and concerns, especially about the smell. And they were right to bring it up. It was new, it was different. It stood out in a way that made people uncomfortable, but we didn't ignore that. We didn't pretend we had all the answers. We listened. We went back to the joint board. We found low odor, high CBD genetics. We upgraded our practices, and we took real steps to be better neighbors because we're not here to disrupt, we're here to contribute. I remember logging into our local Facebook group in 2019, just trying to answer people's questions honestly. One post turned into hundreds of comments, and I stayed up all night replying. Because people weren't mad, they were just asking, "What is this? What are you doing? What does it mean for us?" And I've always believed you can't fear what you take time to understand. So that became our mission: be transparent, be available, and of course, be human. Today, our company has grown, not just in size but in vision, and we're ready for the next step: manufacturing. Let me be clear: no growing, no processing, absolutely no smell, just a secure, clean, fully licensed facility where we'll package legal cannabis products under strict regulations and safety standards. And in doing so, we plan to create new jobs right here in Poughkeepsie. These are not just throwaway jobs. These are jobs that build skills, create stability, and give people a chance to grow their own careers, just like I did. To my Eastdale neighbors, I hear you, and I truly understand where you come from because I live here too. I walk these streets, I support the local businesses. I share the same hopes you do for what this community can become. And I want to say clearly, I would never support something I didn't believe in. And I believe in this company, not just because of what we've done, but what we can still do together. I learned that when you care about your neighbors, you listen, you show up. You build with people in mind. That's the heart of our business, and that's the spirit we bring to the community. This company gave me something I didn't even know I was looking for. It gave me purpose. This town, Eastdale, gave me something even greater. It gave me a home. And now, I just want to give something back, to help create new opportunities, to support our local economy, and to show what's possible when you lead with heart, with respect, and with intention. Thank you for listening, thank you for caring, and thank you for just giving me the chance to speak, not just as an executive, but as a neighbor. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Daniel. That's it for the people who are signed up to speak, but if anyone else wishes to speak, just raise your hand, come on down. Anyone else wish to speak on this tonight? Anyone on Zoom call wish to add anything? All right, we're going to decide whether we're going to close or adjourn after we go around for comments. Start with, start with Lisa, see if she has anything additional. We just got the papers from Richard and others.
Yeah, I don't, at this point, I don't, have you had a chance to skim them as well?
We did, and we're pleased to provide at least some initial feedback responses to those comments if we're given the opportunity, but I certainly defer to the chairs or business. I give a short, maybe just a short thank you for the opportunity. For the record, Taylor Palmer with Cuddy Fader on behalf of the applicant. There were some comments tonight represented by representatives of Eastdale who have been involved in this process since their first letter to you that represented these concerns in November of last year. We have provided written responses to those comments already. We did provide a number of details in our December 23, 2024 submission explicitly, and I just want to kind of read back just two items in particular because we're not discussing use this evening. That's not appropriate for the board, as mentioned by Mr. Cantor. It is for the zoning administrator. But the use district, just for the benefit of the board, because it's included in our submissions and it's important, in the heavy industrial district, the uses include a wide range of assembling, fabricating, manufacturing activities such as food processing, manufacturing and packaging, grain store, processing and distribution, concrete and asphalt batch plants, manufacture of products and merchandise involving the use of chemicals, processing of materials. This goes on for another eight lines. So this is, by all means, the use is, the question is respectfully ridiculous. I also note that there was a bit of disingenuousness by the Eastdale representative, Mr. Kane, who spoke to the conversations that were private discussions between the applicant and the neighbors as we tried to work through. For the benefit of the board, the reason why those discussions fell through is the Eastdale representative sought punitive damages if ever there were an issue with this property. The town is conditioning this approval. It has its consultants, it has its staff to enforce those regulations. What they're saying is they don't trust that the town staff will enforce the conditions that you would impose on this application. The applicant is self-imposing restrictions, and these will all be conditions of approval that if, and there is an instance, of impacts, which again, all of our studies and reports address, that would be a code enforcement issue that the town can enforce. So to have a private entity seeking private punitive damages, there was no way that that conversation could continue. So just for those here, that was the discussion, why those conversations ultimately broke down. Lastly, with regard to seeker, that conversation about reuse, what they're suggesting is that any building permit application before the town would require some type of seeker review. Consistent with what we put into our submission materials, we're not changing anything to this building. We are doing internal work to the structural facility. Your board went through what is tantamount to an environmental review, whether it's unlisted, type-one or otherwise. We have a full odor mitigation study. We have a traffic consultant and a parking consultant. In a building permit application, you wouldn't do any of this. So all of these materials, this effectively full-blown site plan and review related to what's required in your code and consistent with a type-two action review process or a more detailed environmental review process were done with you all during this process. So I just want to sort of highlight those pieces. And if I may, the materials that were submitted today are reiterated of what was included in that first letter from Council in November of last year, which we did address through our materials and through our multiple reports that we provided to you throughout this process. So again, those comments are there. I think it's appropriate that the board consider closing the hearing because the comments haven't changed, and respectfully, we have addressed them. And to the extent the board would want us to provide further comment to those, we can certainly do so, but I don't think it would be necessary to keep a continued hearing for that because our materials already address the contents of those.
Thanks for your response. We're just going to go around the board for comments at this point, for board members. Peter?
First, before I forget, Mr. Freeman, I have a quick question for you, please. You mentioned that your consultant took some base readings outside and inside. Did you share that with our consultant, the results of that?
Absolutely. Your consultant has had the Bayer study as the basis of these continued conversations.
So then we actually have a base reading, something. There's a school of thought called epistemology, which is really a study of how we obtain knowledge as human beings. And it falls into really two general categories. One is a priori knowledge, which is based on concepts without actual experience. And the other is a posteriori, which is experience. We are amateurs here, volunteers. We have, most of our decisions that we make are really a posteriori, based on building heights and setback requirements and zoning building codes and so forth. This is something really out of our realm. Odor control and mitigation, any decision that we make really here would be an a priori type, on our part, an a priori type because we have no experience in making that decision. That's why we rely on consultants and experts in this field because they have that a posteriori knowledge. And that's what we have to rely on. To tell you the truth, you know, I read the comments, the letter dated March 24 from Colliers Engineering and Design. Under operational monitoring and reporting, I'd have to say that they gave a comprehensive response to really addressing every request that we had made of them. And I have to say, really, that's reassuring that that was done, so. The final comment I have here is the note on the plan that reads as follows: "The allowed use of the site does not include either the extraction or cultivation of cannabis or any other plant or product. The allowed use is confined to the repackaging of cannabis products from bulk cannabis materials and to the manufacturing of consumable cannabis products." Now, you mentioned earlier belt and suspenders. My question to our attorney is, is it advisable or do you think reasonable to? My question is to the durability of that note. In other words, would that endure the life of the occupancy?
It endures the life of the site plan. So regardless of who, even if this applicant were to sell it, if the use stayed the same, it endures up until the point where someone comes in for an amended site plan.
So it's not recommended or advisable to put one sentence at the end of that to the effect that this note will be in full force and effect during the life of the occupancy?
I think that would be the epitome of belt and suspenders.
But do you have any objection to putting that in?
I don't have an objection to it, I don't think it's necessary.
Okay, but I would like to, just to add that one sentence, that that note will be in full force and effect during the entire length of the occupancy.
Yeah, we asked about, you know, monthly monitoring for the first year and to report some of that.
Yeah, that's all I'm clear.
But throughout the occupancy.
As a matter of fact, that monthly reporting will become our knowledge. We were talking about a posteriori. That monthly reporting will become our experience. So then we will obtain that knowledge, hopefully. But I would like to add that one sentence to the note.
All right, I agree, that would be good for you.
Peter, are you saying that you would want to grant conditional tonight? Is that what you're saying?
I think we have some, we need to hear a comment from the board attorney as to whether we're ready to do that before her ability to review the document we received tonight.
Right. Yeah, we'll have to let her look a little further, and we'll go around for additional comments. Nicole?
No, I think that what Peter said was all that can be said at this time. I personally think that we need to defer, but that's my personal opinion. So I'll just turn it over to my next board member here.
No additional comment here.
I think we should defer.
I just want to make sure I'm clear. In the information brought forward, there was a challenge as to whether this was industrial. It is industrial, it's always stayed industrial, correct?
Yeah, it's an industrial zone, isn't it? That's the way it's owned, the town board did not have to rezone it.
Yeah, I think there's two questions. One, can we close the public hearing and still defer?
Yes, that's a possibility.
And then I would, because of the amount of data brought forward to us, I would also like legal's view on this, but that doesn't prevent us from closing the public hearing.
All right.
I agree, I think we should defer.
So I would agree with the closing the public hearing because I don't think there will be any new information provided. My initial thought on looking at the application is I tend to agree with our zoning administrator that this is an allowed use under that. And I also note that that determination was made, even though it may not have been explicit in the document. It's implicit in the document as of November, so I think that's been out there. The one thing I do want to look at is the possibility that it's a type-two action versus an unlisted action. is the possibility that it's a type-two action versus an unlisted action. But I had, in my mind, for some reason, been thinking this was a type-two under the subsection nine, which is when you basically have a non-residential structure that you're working with. But that does, there are some nuances there because it limits it to 4,000 square feet. But in my mind, there was not more than 4,000 square feet of additional space. You know, the inside of the building is separate. The building is there.
Nothing's being added.
And we typically look at that if someone wants to add, you know, a bump out to a building or something like that. So in my mind, I had not, unfortunately, until right now, picked up on the fact that the applicant was asserting under, type-two under number 18, which I think the opponents may have a point that, you know, which does specifically say commercial or residential, and I haven't. This would be an industrial use. So I will look at their paperwork to see if that applies. But I do think that, you know, given what's been going on on the site, I think it's a type-two action as I sit here. So my recommendation for the board would be to close the public hearing and then to allow, you know, the applicant and me to ponder some of this and give the board further guidance at the next meeting.
All right. Thanks for your comments, Lisa. Yeah, there's a lot of new material here. I will say that, you know, the applicant has worked closely with our consultant and added all the filtration and various state-of-the-art things that he requested. And will, and wants to, and we added the VOC sensors downstream. That will help make sure that the filters don't just sit there and don't get changed. So that's a very, maintenance is a very important part of it from the beginning in my mind. Even though you have to build it the right way, you have to plan it the right way, but also build it the right way and monitor it the right way. And as we've progressed through these months, we've gone through all those steps. And so I think that's going the right way. That being said, we have this new material to look at. So at this point, I will move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved in second. It all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. And last comments here. Now, I think everything's been said.
I move that the planning board defer action on this application and prompt the applicant to respond to comments and writing of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies included in that element to the following one through six.
Second.
Moved in second. It's a review. Additional comments? Cole's question. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes seven zero. All right, thanks for your time.
Thank you for your time. Happy holidays if you celebrate.
Next on the agenda is Vertical Bridge and Pendel Road. Yeah.
Really, I guess.
Good evening, everyone. Just going to take one moment to get set up here. I want to be able to share my screen with you during.
Yeah, we need a minute to let everybody.
This process, yes.
Yeah, we're out here. I'm going to close some doors, all right? You got it?
Having a little trouble connecting. While we do that, I do see that.
Are you having trouble connecting to the Zoom or to the Wi-Fi?
No, my computer is having issues.
Oh, your computer? Okay, all right, all right. Because I think I corrected the issue we were having after our little incident. I had locked the meeting, and so a couple of people couldn't get back in. But they, it appeared they hadn't made it back in now.
Yes, I do see two members of my team on, their names on the list. So hopefully, we're all good there. But I don't know what my computer is doing. Here we go.
Take your time. It's all right. Take some in a minute. Keith, as your hand raised, why? Did you have a question, Keith, or?
Keith is part of our team.
He's part of your team, right? I recognize the name, yeah.
Yes. Okay.
Maybe he just wanted you to unmute him?
Oh, he might be. You might, you have to give him permission? Did Tim do something?
Well, he did, but I've since modified that back because I feel like we're probably.
He had emailed me and said he couldn't get in. But I'll just email him back.
All right, I'll try to unmute him or maybe that helps just in case there's an issue. Ask him. Hi, Keith. Can't hear you, though. You're very quiet. Why is that? Let's see. Try again.
How about now?
Yeah, that's better.
Perfect. Great, thank you.
Were you trying to unmute before? I'm just trying to see.
I was. It wouldn't let me unmute. That's why I raised my hand.
Okay, all right, thank you. Good to know.
And my video is still turned off. I can't un.
Yeah, yeah, I did that.
But that's fine. I don't need to.
No, we want to see you. All right, so I put you on. All right.
There we go.
All right, there you are. Okay, yeah, I fixed the unmute situation. So that won't be a problem in the future.
Sorry, just to clarify. Will I be able to share my screen during the meeting or no? Because we're not doing that anymore.
Share screen is on. Yep, you should be okay.
Okay.
Are you logged in to the meeting?
I think I.
Because we don't, I don't see a name that would be yours on the screen. There we go.
Yeah, there she is. All right.
Okay. I don't have much to share, but I just wanted to be able to, for illustration purposes, when we get there.
Yeah, we're trying to figure out the new location.
Yes, of course. Okay, now that we're all situated. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, chairman and members of the planning board. For the record, my name is Jessica Zalen. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Cuddy &amp; Federer LLP. I am here tonight appearing on behalf of the applicant, Vertical Bridge CCFM LLC, in request, in connection with their request for site plan approval to construct a wireless communication facility at Two Pendel Road. I am joined tonight by Keith Mendeski of Vertical Bridge, as well, I believe, as Mark Fuentes of Aerosmith Engineering, who's the site acquisition consultant. They both appear to be connected via Zoom. We are here generally tonight to continue discussions with this board related to the applicant's proposed installation of the 150-foot wireless communication tower and equipment on the Town Square Media property. Specifically, what we'd like to discuss is the location of the facility on the property. Once we've confirmed a location that's acceptable to the board, we plan to provide a detailed supplemental submission that will address the remaining comments by this board and the town's staff and consultants and enable us to move forward through the process. But we wanted to just have some preliminary feedback and discussions to make sure that we are comfortable with where we are before we start diving in.
That makes sense.
Great, okay. So as you might recall from the last time we were here, the 150-foot monopole will be constructed within a fenced equipment compound on this 9.8 and change acre property. The property is currently developed with an existing building as well as the two guide AM radio towers and associated parking areas. We are in the RM zoning district, and this pole is proposed to be used by AT&amp;T as the anchor tenant. Their operations are going to be at a center line of 175 feet, excuse me, 145 feet, that would be impossible on a 150-foot tower. But we, yeah, we've designed the tower to accommodate wireless communication equipment of other carriers as well. So with respect to the specific location on the property, if you might remember from the last meeting, we had reviewed 12 potential locations that Vertical Bridge had analyzed. At the time, we were in a location that was known as location six. There was another location on the site called location five. Basically, during these discussions, the board said, what if we move somewhere in between location six and location five? The applicant reviewed and figured out that they were able to shift the tower. So I'm going to share my screen now. And I'm going to jump in to. So this is the location of the tower with, in the photo simulation that we had presented in the submission on, that we made on January 27. This is the location, sorry, let me just make that clearer. This is the location of the tower as it now stands. So here, it's further up in the parking lot. Here, it's much further recessed towards the back of the property. It's at the end of the parking area. So we're not getting into a situation where we have to disturb a tremendous amount of ground. This is an area that allows us to minimize site disturbance and minimize the creation of impervious surfaces for this facility.
Can you just flip back and forth again?
Yep. So here is the initial. And you can see the compound is within the parking area. I know the board also had a question last time about whether the compound would affect the parking area, whether it would change the demand calculation. Here, we're at the back of the parking area, so that concern is alleviated. And I can show also, if you want me to flip over to the site plans, I can do that as well.
Do you know approximately how many feet it got moved back?
You know what? I will be able to tell you once we switch over to these site plans. Or if Keith or Mark, if you know offhand, feel free to chime in.
It's at least 150 feet further back, if I'm not mistaken. Let's go to the drawing.
Yep, okay, so.
Carl, I actually took a look before the meeting because I know the board had that question. And it looks like the overall compound relocated about 100 feet eastward. The pole setback within the compound went from 120 feet to 285 feet. So the position of the pole within the compound is also adjusted. But the overall, so the distance of the pole from the road and the distance of the compound from the road, the change is a little different.
So the pole, which is really the important one, is what?
From 120 to 2, it moved 165 feet. I already did the setbacks. Thank you.
Yeah, so here.
And it looks to be about halfway back between study site five, six, and five.
Yes, that sounds, that sounds right. We tried to find an area that would, as I mentioned, minimize the disturbances to the site and also balance AT&amp;T's coverage needs with the interference with the radio station.
All right, continue.
Really, that's what we wanted to discuss tonight. We wanted to share this with you and we wanted to open up the discussion for board feedback on that piece, understanding that, of course, there are other issues that we will need to address and we do plan to address in our future submissions. This kind of became a threshold question for us.
All right, thank you. Eric?
Sure. Let's see. Yeah, okay, we're before the board for seeker's site plan and architecture. And we have tonight, the applicant, as you know, to request a just discussion of the location. And we mentioned that in our review. I guess the comments, we've gone through the comments and updated them. There's not too much to update. Mostly, it's the site location. And that's really the discussion of the board. It is relocated, as I just said, about 165 feet further back to the overall pole. And then the overall compound, the arrangement of things, gets set back about 100 feet. So we are recommending that you discuss with the applicant the alternate sighting location. And also, along with that discussion, so in order to expedite progress at the next meeting, we're recommending the board indicate if you need a new visual simulation analysis overall or if what you've seen for the view from Pendel Road is sufficient. All right? And then lastly, the comment that did not get discussed last time, which would again be helpful, would be to discuss whether, if you have any particular thoughts about a mechanism or a threshold for deconditioning and removing the facility at the end of its use. That topic, that could come later. But that might help move things ahead next time. We can figure out the details of that. If you're inclined to do it or not to do it would be most helpful.
Yeah, we need to know when things go into life or whatever. Or stops becoming used. We do that with other things as well.
And so accordingly, there's a recommendation to discuss and defer.
All right, thanks, Eric. Anything obvious?
Yeah, we have no concerns with the relocation itself. All, they did address some of our comments, coincidentally. There are some outstanding that we discussed previously. The only thing that's new, which changed, was as of January 1 of 2025, the wetland, federal wetland regulations changed, which now will require them to submit to the DEC for jurisdictional determination. It's just another process that may impact their timeline. It's a new process for the DEC, so it could take some time to get a response from them. But it will require some additional steps to determine what the buffer is and how it, what the DEC will think of the project and any mitigation or potential protection requirements they may have.
Okay, thanks. I'll note that our wetland consultant is not, environmental consultant is not on tonight, but she did submit a letter that you guys can look at and respond to. But there's a possibility of a 100-foot buffer around this wetland, doing its connectivity to this rounding stuff. So love to see where that shakes out. But you're not touching the wetland itself, but you could be in the buffer if the way is working out.
Of course, if there is wetland permitting required, the applicant will apply for any needed, any necessary permits. It's all part of the, all part of the process.
All right. It's on for a public hearing also tonight, so I move to open the public hearing.
Second.
Moved in second. It all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes seven zero. Anyone in the audience wish to comment on this application? Any comments?
Jessica, could you just unshare your screen?
Yes.
I don't, I don't think there's.
Anyone on Zoom wish to comment on Vertical Bridge? When do you think you're going to come back in for the next?
I do think that we will likely not make the submission deadline. That's in just a couple of days. So we'd like to be placed on the calendar for the following meeting.
All right, I move adjourn the public hearing to June 26, 2025.
Second.
Moved in second. It all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Let's go around the board for comments.
I'll just note, since we did close for the applicant's benefit, our monthly date in June is a little unusual because the town, the third Thursday, I believe the third Thursday of the month of the normally scheduled meeting will be a town holiday date. And the town hall will be closed. So the schedule deadline is the same, but the public meeting date is the following week, June 26th, the fourth Thursday, not the third. And I guess I'll make that note for the public as well.
Thanks, Eric.
Thank you.
I was just going to ask the applicant if they consent to an extension of the shot clock based on the back and forth. As I understand it, I think it expires on June 8. And I think the applicant also requires a trip to the ZVA potentially.
Yes, we understand that based on the logistics, we're going to need. Yes, we understand that based on the logistics, we're going to need, um, some sort of extension, yes.
So for present purposes, we'll do it to this, the June meeting and then we can talk in the interim about...
Of course.
Something thereafter?
That's fine with, with us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks for clarifying that part. Uh, as we go around the board, you, you, are you satisfied with this new location or further movement and do we need any additional visual references? Uh, start with Nicole.
Yeah, I, I think that this is a better position. Um, it's further back and, and one of our, uh, initial issues was that it was too close to the road and you have a good care across the street. Uh, so moving it back further and essentially out of the parking lot, so you don't have to deal with any parking issues is also a, a good thing. Um, you'll have, as Bobby said, you'll have to submit to DEC probably. Um, uh, in our consultant's notes, uh, Aspen had noted for possible landing turtles, so you'll have to go through that. Um, obviously you'll have to get some setback vari, uh, setback variance and a height variance from zoning. Um, and then my, I, and I think I already asked this, but this no longer poses an issue to sewer, correct?
No, I, no, it's no more impact than there was before.
Okay.
Yeah, easement's, uh...
They just kinda have to work around the easement during construction.
It's to the east of the sub-project site, so they should hopefully not touch it.
Okay, so that's it, thanks.
Don't, don't heavy equip on that either to compress it potentially. All right, anything else?
Uh, no additional comments.
No additional.
No additional.
Nothing here.
And Peter?
Uh, the only comment that I have is, uh, there's a comment here from Aspen Environmental that addresses the drilling of the Monopole Base at Tucker's Drive location where groundwater due to proximity to the wetland caused significant construction issues. I think, I, I'm fine with the location of this. I think they can go ahead now and do a geotech study just for, for that area and it should, they'll know soon enough if there were any groundwater issues in that location.
Yes, it's, it's my understanding that the soils here are significantly different than the soils at the other site, but we will obviously assess and support and provide supporting documentation that will show that this site is able to, to support the facility.
Seek, do you show fine?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I'm, I think I'm satisfied as well that it was right in the, right in front of the daycare's eyes and as well as the Pendelmo is right across the street. And as Nicole mentioned, this solves any parking concerns if there were any. Um, depending on what your, your test is fine, you, you, you can decide if you want to move it further back toward E or whatever, that may be further from the round as well. Depends on your, on your...
Well, can, can I ask a quick question about this? As I, I'm sorry, I stepped out. Um, so if this was already answered, just kick me. But, um, so what the, the, why did you stop at this location that you did? I, I mean, as I know, sort of just at the end of the parking lot, but, you know, what would be, um, if it went another, you know, fifty feet further or something? I'm just curious about that. Uh, have you looked further?
Sure, I will ask, um, either Keith or Mark to chime in on that one if you will.
I can answer. I, I wanted to reduce the amount of impervious area that we were affecting. Uh, keeping it closer to the end of the parking lot made the most sense. So that's the basic reason. I also was able to maintain, uh, being in that same contour, if you guys recall, the way the AM signal is propagating, there were some contour wave lines. And so I, uh, I wanted to stay within that same contour energy level.
So, so if it moved back further, that would impact the AM signal in a different way?
Yeah, I would have to stay in the same band of the contour. I would end up having to move closer to the wetland, um, and closer to the, to the property line. So I thought that this was the better, uh, a balance between staying within the energy contour of the AM tower, uh, as well as in between the easements and trying to keep as much distance between the, the compound and the wetlands.
Okay. Because it looked to me if you kept going straight back, you'd be further from the wetland, but you say that would, that couldn't be the location, it would have to be closer to the property line then if you went further back.
Yeah, and there's, remember, there's underground wires all through that site? So when we drive across those wires, um, it, it becomes, um, you, you could damage them. So the least amount of impact I can have on those ground radials, the better the station will perform, the, the AM station will perform.
Yep. All right, thanks for explaining that. Um, I don't think we need to do another balloon test or, or additional visuals at this point. I appreciate the visually you did show from, from the road.
Okay.
And that helps us to decide, so. Anybody have any objections to them moving forward, investigating this location further and doing their, their geotech tests? All right? Um, seeing now, I guess we can just go ahead.
Move the planning board, determine that this applica, application is incomplete to defer action on this application and to direct the applicant to respond to comments and writing of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies included but not limited to the following, one through nine.
Second.
Moved to second, call the, call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. All right, thanks for coming in.
Thank you, everyone, for your time.
Good luck with this location.
Thank you.
Next up is fifty-one Vassar Road. Is there someone in the room representing that?
I think it's Brian on Zoom.
Or Brian?
Yes.
Okay, Brian.
Uh, good evening, Brian Watts here from Dasticosa here with the, um, with the applicant, Matt Uclito, on screen as well.
All right.
So you want me to just give a thorough overview presentation here and start?
Yeah, just, uh, I mean, we saw it once, I guess, but just to refresh our memory what it is. And I don't know if you have any particular, I think you said it was a single-use retail. Oops.
All right, so let me, uh...
I have a lot of documents.
Wow. That's classic.
I feel so much better right now.
Just see if I can hop this over here. Can everyone see this?
Yep.
Yes.
There we go, we got it up.
All right, again, the, um, property, fifty-one Vassar Road, it is across from, this would be the Stewart's, the Dunkin' Donuts, this is Red Oaks Mill, uh, Plaza, Red Oaks Mill Shopping Plaza is up here, this is a gas station, this would be the Jewish Community Center and a residential home. The project is currently... I'm sorry, that's the wrong one. There we go. This is a redevelopment of the previously, the, this partial right here we're talking about. Previously developed, uh, this picture is about two thousand and fifteen, towards the end of the operations. We can see all the pavement here, existing buildings, uh, this structure, shed are all part of the property that was raised in two thousand and sixteen. We could see it knocked down, uh, this is freshly after being knocked down. We can still see the construction fence up. And this is how it looks today. Uh, some of the driveway remnants, or foundation remnants have kind of grown in a little bit there. So the applicant is seeking to, uh, redevelop this to a residential unit, uh, unit for a single occupancy. He has a couple potential tenants in mind. He works with, uh, large regional, um, large regional, uh, retailers and national. So existing, again, uh, driveway, driveway remnants, uh, this is that driveway remnant that went up to the driveway that was that residential-style building at one point. This is the driveways, act, the active driveway for the neighbor to the south.
Yep.
Um, there's a fence here in the edge of the tree line as we go along, uh, these existing telephone poles. This is actively used to provide for the, um, plaza here and also one time provided services for the building that was here in the main building here. This pole serves this building.
Quick interruption, uh, Brian, is that, that fence between you and the residence, is that yours or the residential ownership?
It's shown, uh, on our property side for the most part. Uh, it basically is, is right on the line right here. It's a short, it's a short piece. Uh, nothing we would do would rely upon that for any kind of future screenings or anything of that nature.
Yeah, I was just wondering if that's something you planted. It's in some disrepair, so I didn't know if that was something you were, that was the neighbor's ownership or, or yours.
We can, um, review that with the neighbor. Uh, it is shown on our side and we're looking to improve all that anyway.
Okay.
To provide a really good buffer.
Right, it's not in very good shape. No, that's what I said, it looks like it can take it down, so...
It's horrible looking. Um, we wouldn't, that's a treat to get rid of that.
That would be good to negotiate with the neighbor to, to do something about it. All right, continue.
Um, proposing a, a single-story, uh, ten thousand, six hundred square foot retail building, uh, parking in the front and rear, uh, some parallel parking along the side. We had tried to keep the bulk of the building as far north as possible to maximize our distance again from here, from the neighboring residential use. The, uh, we have truck movements in the back, that's why this is oversized. Septic area would be in this location, some snow storage would be around the perimeter. Uh, for drainage and ease, that snow removal is why we have some curb terminuses here. Everything is pitched to the rear of the property. Uh, the creek is in the back, far back, we won't be disturbing that. We're not touching the floodplain or anything of this sort. This is the existing tree line to remain. Most of the improvements are within the area that was already cleared for the previous development. Um, we've met with, one of the big changes between the first meeting and this meeting is that we met with the Dutchess County Department of Public Works on site. Uh, we had the surveyor go out and did site distances. Uh, the Department of Public Works had initially indicated that they would prefer the entrance at this approximate location. Um, we want it as far north as possible.
Yeah.
The results of that meeting for that, there's the limitations for site distance for the property is, let me see if I can put back one where it's a little clearer. The limitations for this project's site distance looking left...
Yep.
Is about bush, a large bush right in this vicinity, which appears to be off of the right-of-way.
It's a precipia?
Precipia. If you do, I don't know if you have or, or planning going to the site, you can look at this and see that it has been trimmed heavily already on the right-of-way side. And the recollection of the Department of Public Works was that was the first site distance for the community center.
I mean, it's also, yeah, I think more, more part, part of the site distance is the, the hill, it rises, the road rises up there as well.
Yeah.
Comes down, so...
Yes, there is a, you can actually, you can see it. You can go far enough back right here, the little knoll. This is again that bush.
So when you're at your driveway, it, it, there's a rise.
Right, you're here, so the bush is the limiting factor. If you eliminate the bush, not that we necessarily can because it's, appears to be on private property, the next entrance is the sign, which again is on private property. And even if that wasn't there, site distance would have to be closer to here and this would be the third property, which we have no ability to gain easements necessarily, it's all private property. So the intent was to move the site, the entrance, at the time they agreed, as far north as we can, throughout this area, uh, with the, uh, as long as we can maintain their geometric constraints, which is have the curb a little, it's about five feet away from the property line where the radius tapers. So which, so this entire project shifted from here down. So that was, uh, the, the largest change that we did along with some of the cleanup from some of the comments.
All right.
Um, the, uh, this one didn't print very well in black and white, but we can get these vehicles to work. Uh, the garbage truck can come in, come around this way. If they're ambitious, they could do that turnaround we did initially to stay away from the residential. But we showed this as requested. Uh, we show a sixty-seven truck move because that's honestly the largest vehicle that we would ever expect to serve any kind of retail use. Um, that, that's why, I mean, that some of the retailers he works with would, can use smaller trucks such as a WB forty or, or fifty-four or what have you, um, on smaller sites. I know there might be some concerns about the trucks coming in and out. Um, this large truck would be not significantly more different than what I would expect from the fuel truck that would serve any of the number of the gas stations in the area coming in and on there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I don't anticipate having nearly as many deliveries for this building as you would a gas station, uh, for the fuel. Um, so we have that, refuse enclosure to match the building, again, septic in the rear. We'll work with the board to help once we're certain that this is where it's gonna go, um, relative to the building, because if we keep moving the building, we don't want to keep going out there and digging holes twice or anything of the nature. Um, we can keep these poles now. Originally we had to shift them, but now we can keep them. Uh, water will, will include all the water department's, uh, necessary details for a meter pit, probably in this area, which is grassed. Um, I'm not showing, this is called a concrete sidewalk, but I'm not sure if I would call it that myself. Um, anyone has actually seen the site? It's, I, it's, it's more of a channelization island.
No, it's...
Oh, Amazon. At one point, I don't know how far, long ago, but this was actually all tree pits, planters, there's no, there's no, uh, no curved islands, none of this is ADA compliant, there's still a street tree, we had telephone poles, guy wires.
Well, I mean, that's, that's not your parcel anyway to worry about.
Yeah.
No, just...
We don't need to worry about someone else's parcel.
There really isn't any necessarily dedicated pedestrian facilities at this time, I would call anyway dedicated, intentional pedestrian facilities.
When they come in.
But...
We'll see when they come in for something.
If the board wants somebody to start it, the applicant heads, is very agreeable, they, we can put sidewalks in across the front. Um, so I suspect the board would be very interested in that. Um, we would complete that with part of, if the board agrees to put side, that we want to put sidewalks in here, uh, we would include that and if we leave street package, go back to the county.
Yeah, I think we want to do that. The only question is if the county would want to require that in the county right-of-way or on your property. So that would be...
I hadn't, at the time, hadn't shown it in the field meeting. Um, we talked that it necessarily wasn't gonna be required by them, but they're agreeable to it if the board wanted to.
Yep.
So...
Yeah, we're gonna want that, because what, because the next time that mall, that plaza comes in for something, we're gonna ask them to upgrade that one as well. Because there's, there's housing developments all around this area. So continue with your presentation, if anything else.
So, um, again, the grading, we're showing, this is a little more developed grading than the first, um, the first iteration. We do have that, uh, uh, because it all slopes to the rear, there is a grade change between the upper and the rear. Um, if, as long as this, we think we can keep this building and, and whatnot and the parking in this general vicinity, we would, uh, be putting in a loading dock, exterior loading dock.
Good.
Um, with a stairs, probably stairs and a ramp for both employees and/or deliveries to be able to get up to, um, the doors, which, you know, depending on the final floor plan, can shift, uh, one way or the other in this corner or this corner. Uh, basic septic and lighting, um, I'm showing, you know, a large area, which is why the foot candles are coming out as a low-average foot candles. Uh, but the county planning, I think, reviewed this and they seem to like that it was a low-level lighting approach and seem to be happy with it. Um, I think it, I think it would be suitable to the area. There is some lighting on the poles and spill over from this property would help probably add a little bit here from... from trespass from this air, building onto ours. But we're not trespassing anywhere else in the property. Landscaping, we're definitely gonna want a strong landscaping presence here to buffer the residential area. I know there's, um, requirements for landscaping in the back, we would ask if the board could have the discretion with that. Being there's a heavy tree line here that we're nowhere near, and there's nothing behind us but the creek. Um,
Yep.
No one would see any of the plantings here, and in all likelihood, that wouldn't serve much purpose.
We'll see what the board thinks, but yeah, generally, we're trying to screen from the house next door.
So I, yeah, we can show heavier, again, this is the existing tree line, we can supplement that with, uh, evergreens. So that we got some year-round screening, uh, break it up with a couple deciduous trees. Uh, we're really hoping to work with the board on whatever they think is appropriate for the, for the area here, for the gateway parcel.
All right, thanks for your presentation. Let's move on to Kristen for, for comments.
Okay, thanks Brian for the, the overview. Um, it is on for a public hearing this evening, um, for a secret purposes, it's an unlisted action subject to a coordinated review. The planning board did declare its intent to serve as lead agency, uh, in November twenty twenty-four, no objections to date have been received. Um, in terms of the environmental components and just site plan review, we, there are a number of items, uh, we're still gonna work through with Brian, um, and his, and the, you know, applicant's team. Um, applicant is encouraged to seek early consultation with the Department of Health. Uh, I believe that consultation has been initiated, I know that they're working obviously with, uh, Dutchess County DPW. Um, and there were two sets of comments that DPW had forwarded on, uh, I believe, Brian, you were given both sets of comments.
I, I was given, um, we will I'm not necessarily agree with, uh, his recommendation, so we're gonna be working with them.
That's fine, we don't have to get into it necessarily right now, uh, but I just wanted to confirm that you received both, uh, sets. Um, and then also just in terms of DEC, uh, the new JD review, I know the applicant has already submitted for their initial consultation for that review. Is everyone okay?
It's the joys of seasonal hours.
Oh, no, everyone's coughing, okay, get out. Um, uh, in terms of, um, for the boards, uh, just, I wanted to bring to your attention, one of the comments, comment number eight in my staff review, uh, is related to following design standards as prescribed by the code for the zoning district. Um, there is a lot of discretion given to the planning board, um, in terms of landscape buffers, so, uh, maybe it's something you want to talk about, if you kind of like what you're hearing from the applicant in terms of a buffer, that's great, if you would like to see more, um, or an extension of that buffer, please, this would probably be a good time to be having those conversations. Um, and then, you know, again, we're gonna continue to review the application. I know that the planning board was interested in sidewalks along Vassar Road, so yes, that, that was, that's definitely on their table. Um, I think you touched on it at the beginning, I was momentarily distracted, but, uh, can you just, um, talk a little bit about the access at the property of the north, is that going to be maintained? Um, the board would have some questions about that as well. Um, otherwise, the application is on for a public hearing, staff is recommending that the board would open the public hearing, hear any comments, adjourn the hearing, um, and then defer action.
Great, thanks Kristen. And do you have any comment, Brian, on the, on the plaza that's been, I think, using your parcel for getting trucks around that?
Let me, uh, yeah, let me just figure out why my zoom out here, I think I went too far.
You're not sharing your screen actually right now. There you go.
The there you go. So, oh boy, the
Not much room there, I guess, on their parcel.
Currently, it's about a nine-point-seven-foot offset from the corner of the building is the property line for the Red Oaks Mall Plaza. This was agreed upon in two thousand eight. Uh, it's about the midpoint of where these two deeds said the property line was, and they agreed upon this. Now that we've moved the driveway, our driveway back down here, this is where the existing curb cut is. We don't necessarily have to change it, it is within their property line. So they can still act, have this kind of access. You know, he's agreeable to provide some kind of cross-access easement to this prop, to this property owner, to our site. This is our, realistically, this is already has gravel here.
Right.
Um, we can give them access to our site to use this. We don't have to repair this, and he can still use it, I suppose, but, um, if the applicant wants to speak on that, what he's willing to do with that, I don't know if he's already had talks with him or not.
Yeah, we'd like to see cross-connections if possible on some things that makes it easier for curb cuts on the main road.
Yeah, hi, uh, I'm Matt Uglido, I'm the developer for this. Um, hopefully you can hear me.
Yep, you can hear me, Matt, thanks.
Um, yeah, I, I have talked with the, uh, adjourn, the adjacent property owner. Um, we're open to the idea of doing a cross-access easement. Um, you know, as we further define what the county wants to see, you know, this is relatively, relatively new as far as the, uh, the entrance location. Um, I'm not looking to cut off any access to trucks coming around. Um, uh, I, you know, we, we would, we, we've talked about it in the past, uh, where we need, you know, depending on where the driveway is and, uh, and how, how we can make that work.
Make a connection in there somehow, okay.
Yeah, we, we're still trying to figure out the details just because, uh, because of the conversation with the county, but, uh, we're not opposed to it.
All right, once the county, yeah, once the county settles on, you know, your curb cut, then, then figuring out some way to connect that in would be great to do.
Yeah, uh, we don't want people pulling out and pulling right back in next door if they had to go to another location, so.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, we are open to that.
All right, terrific, thanks.
You're welcome.
At this time, I'll go to Robert.
Sure. Um, uh, we already touched on health department review of the septic system. Um, this project will require, uh, preparation of a SWIP and Speedy's permanent coverage. I'm sure they're trying to finalize their site layout before they get too far down the road with stormwater, but um, we'll obviously need to be involved with the stormwater design and, and we'll have to prepare a SWIP. Uh, the electric charging station, I, uh, just, I reached out to the building department, but I haven't gotten an answer. Just look at the code requirements, check with the building department on, uh, you're, they're proposing, uh, one EV charging station that is ADA accessible, but there's only one, so I don't know if the code requires them to have a designated ADA space. So if a non-ADA user was using it, there wouldn't be one open for ADA access.
It's usually, I mean, usually a charger has two connections on it, so one can be used at the ADA space and one can be used at the and one
And that would be a possible
At the space next to it, that's generally how it's done, but the building department, uh, can weigh in on that.
Talked about sidewalks. Uh, and I, I, Brian shared a little light on, uh, we were, had some concerns with the grading that was shown. Uh, with the, there's about a five-foot elevation difference between the front of the building and the back of the building, but it sounds like maybe they're looking at putting a loading dock in with a ramp and stairs, and that might make that connection. So obviously, that'll impact the architecture of the building too, so that the rendering will have to be adjusted to, to show those changes. One, one level inside the building, one finished floor elevation?
Yes.
And those are the, the big bullet points, just, and then the grading, I know you just, uh, submitted for the first time, so just take a look at that grading. Andy noticed a few spots where he was a little concerned about some concentrated potential runoff on, it gets a little steep towards the back, so. Uh, and that'll all come into play once they get into their stormwater design too, so.
Yeah, you don't want anything that causes erosion.
The, the general concept of the layout looks, looks good.
All right, thanks Bobby.
Yep.
That's stormwater, we are anticipating having, um, probably some swales where it would otherwise get concentrated, going to like a, a a, um, a surface treatment system, like a bio-retention or something with some plantings. Uh, as this is all redevelopment, the water quality volume should be relatively small.
Yep.
Uh, most, the pervious is existing, the pre-post should be, I would, I'm hoping pretty comparable, so that, that shouldn't be a, a huge system. Without any underground, minimal underground structures.
Yeah, you got a lot of land to use that slopes down.
Yeah, and the requirement, like you mentioned, the requirements are a little bit lightened for redevelopment, so. Uh, that's a good thing, and they've got plenty of space.
All right. Sound for public hearing, so I move the open public hearing.
Second.
Moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, all for passes, seven to zero. Anyone wish to comment on fifty-one Vassar Road? I assume you'll be submitting the next for June? For the June meeting?
I, I will be trying to, I, I want to work, I, I need to address the county comments with the driveway location first, I think. Um, cause there's some, becomes of that that's gonna meaningfully move the building again.
Well, we'll wait till June, and then if you, if we have, if you're not ready, we can always defer it again, so.
And, and I, I do have a question here, uh, for the board, uh, again, we, we touched on comment number eight. Um, with all the different latitude that the board has on the landscaping. Uh, one of the items is the hundred-foot setback from the residential
Yep.
boundary, is that something that the board has latitude as well, or do we have to go and get a variance on that?
We, we can talk, let us talk about it first, Brian, okay?
I, I, just that, um, I think for us, if we don't, if we have to go for a variance, we need to go for a variance, and we're just, we don't want to get too far into stormwater, Board of Health, county, if, if we have to, if we're not gonna get the variance.
No, it's, so, yeah, the zoning administrator, um, documented that that is a planning board discretion item, so that's, yeah, that's in her comments, and so the planning board would have the ability to grant relief from that hundred feet. Uh, we did have a pre-application with this, uh, applicant, uh, many, many months ago at this point, but we did talk about this at length, and given just the existing site parcel, the way the parcel lines were drawn, um, you know, we, we didn't necessarily see it as, you know, an inhibiting factor, and I think Carly might have even been a part of that conversation.
What is the setback now as it's been presented?
It's a good question. Um, cause there's no existing
The corner of the building itself to the property line on the new plan we're showing here is just over fifty feet from the corner here.
From the closest corner.
See, that house to the south, you know, was totally exposed, totally.
That's why the landscaping
So fifty feet is, it's kind of spare.
Yep, if, I mean, they may want to redo a fence there as well, then, as well as the landscaping.
We have to find some way to mitigate it because there, that is very, very close to that property line. And like I said, the house in the south is totally exposed, that's the feeling.
Well, let me do this motion, let me go around the board, uh, I move we adjourn the planning board, the hearing to, uh, June twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
Move to seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed. Seven to zero. Now we can go around, uh, Peter, uh, continue your
Um, just a couple things, uh, one, you know, with the, uh, site distance, I really didn't find it, I, I was just sitting there as, again, just as a, an amateur, sitting there, and I really didn't find a problem with the site distance, uh, going down toward Route nine. You know, there is a slight grade there.
Right.
But it's really not significant. There's one for Cynthia Bush that sits there that's empty for six months out of the year, then you have the Habaad sign a little bit further down. Uh, but I was sitting at, at, at the south end of the driveway, not the north end, I really didn't see a problem, I'm very, and I'm very sensitive about that, I really didn't see a problem. I also saw a comment in here somewhere about a no-left-turn requirement. Every place that you try to get out, whether it's in Red Oaks Mill Plaza or wherever, you know, it's an issue, you know, trying to make that left turn. You know, I'm not sure if we want to, you know, inhibit their movements, that's what you believe in. They're just, now on the landscaping, I would say the, you have good choices here, Norway spruce, blue spruce, eastern white pine, on the south end of the building, abutting that house. I would stick with the evergreens and go, you know, stay away from the deciduous trees because they're not gonna really be much, uh, much use there. And, let's see, also, we don't allow, uh, flat roofs. And there has to be some kind of penetration along the length of that building, whether it's faux windows, real windows or faux windows, but you're gonna have to do something architecturally with that, I'm just saying, so you know, going down the road, you're gonna have to come up with some ideas to soften up, uh, the design of that building.
Yeah, it's up to just beside, you know, right now it's just the window, the door in front and, uh, all blank walls, so.
Yeah, I also have a question about, in the north, northeast corner of that building, where there is that drop-off, whether it's five feet, whatever it is, even if you have a loading dock there, you still have to figure out a way to get cars around that, so. Maybe I'm just having a conceptual problem, but something you probably, should probably keep in mind.
As long as there's enough pavement there, enough width for the cars to get around the loading dock.
And they can account for that difference in five feet, which is pretty significant.
That's all right, thanks Peter, let me go to Bob.
See, uh, I, Carmen, again, my, uh, opinion, we worked on the site grading and the landscaping in the back, I don't think anything is yet done.
Yeah.
Um, just for the board's benefit, so for the Red Oaks Mills, uh, district, and you could probably use it as a starting point, right? So the side yard setback is required to be twenty-five feet. Um, so that, that, just start again as a, a base, and then you could go from there in terms of, you know, if you wanted to ask the applicant to, uh, you know, provide additional landscaping.
Well, I think the landscaping that they're providing is sufficient, and particularly the, the type of planting that they're doing.
Variety of, uh, evergreens a little bit.
Yeah, if it's fifty, fifty, fifty feet is what they're proposing, the twenty-five is required.
Unhappened.
So be it.
And that's the shortest, like, this place right here.
Right, so the lands, the, the question comes in, it's in the design standards that, and in the layout, um, for this district. When it abuts a residential property is when, residentially-zoned property is when that you can increase the buffer, the landscape buffer. So what we're saying is, you can go, you know, there traditionally you would be requiring a hundred feet. Right now, they're demonstrating a fifty-foot setback from the building to the property line. So you could landscape all, you know, fifty feet, and then, you know, but obviously, they're working within layout constraints as well, so they're trying to accommodate it all, so it's just a matter of reference for the zoning code.
I, I would, I would just amend by saying, you're proposing, uh, trees six to eight feet. I would encourage you to go eight feet, not six to eight feet, but eight feet.
All right, uh, can you share?
I have nothing.
Rocko?
Uh, I am concerned, uh, like several other members, with the screening for that, uh, uh, residential law property, so the higher the trees, the better, and, uh, I, I think I heard that, that you might be replacing, uh, that fence if it's on your property.
Yeah, we can replace that fence, yes.
Yeah, well, one should determine it's on your property.
Or work, you know, work with the neighbors.
Right, yeah, or work with the neighbor, either one.
Yeah, it, it's, it's definitely at its end of life, I think, so.
Right.
So it's good.
We could send you over there, Rocko. Take a look at it.
That'll help with the, help with the screening, screening as well as the evergreens. You all anything?
Um, yeah, uh, do you know who your retail occupant will be yet?
Um, oh, yeah, if I could answer that, uh, we're, we have a couple tenants that, uh, we're working with. Um, for full disclosure, we're, we're working with O'Reilly's Auto Parts, uh, as well as Dollar General and, uh, one or two other national retailers. We're not sure who it's gonna be yet, but, um, we have interest from a few different tenants.
All right, thanks, thanks for sharing that.
So then, uh, ultimately, once you realize who your retail occupant would be, then you would have some type of signage plan for us? Or for zoning?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we would have a signage detail and, um, you know, uh, with a lot of the retailers we've worked with in the past, we, uh, will offer, you know, if you don't want a pylon sign, I can't remember if, it, it wasn't, is required in this district, but we often will do a monument sign with a brick base rather than a, you know, just a standard pylon, you know, or, or something.
Yeah, it, it'll depend on, on zoning requirements. Um, as far as the hundred foot setback waiver is concerned, I have no problem, uh, waiving that and it sounds like the rest of the board members do as well. Um, and a, as far as that new fence is concerned, uh, we tend to like to see something that's going to, um, reflect the environment, so maybe something more of a, a brown fence or, or tan or something like that. Something that would look, look, blend in with the trees and the shrubs and things like that, yeah.
Nicole, excuse me, Nicole, I don't think they're proposing the new fence.
Well, they have to, they have to, uh, change out that fence that's on that property line, so I'm saying if, if they do, when they do, that new fence needs to be a natural color, is what I'm trying to say.
Understood.
So, okay.
I think the, I think the fence could help with the screening, uh, as well as the trees.
So, all right, thank you, that's all I have.
Uh, I think all my comments have mostly been addressed. The main thing is, yeah, as well, as long as you're putting enough evergreens and screening there, we don't need to worry about the, the bigger buffers. Um, we talked about the plaza circulation and, and the sidewalks, I think, is a, is a good thing to have there. And as, as Peter said, they'll take a look at the architecture for, for what we need for, might depend on what business you get in there as well. But, um, we don't like really long wind, uh, facade with no windows on it at all. And all, and each vac equipment should be shielded by a parapet from three different directions that, as you're driving toward it or from it. Just, you don't wanna have to worry about it from the creek side.
Okay. I move the planning board defer action on this application and direct the applicant to respond to comments in the writing, in writing of the planning board and those received in town departments and agencies, included but not limited to the following, one through ten.
Second.
Moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Proposed, motion passes, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Good luck, good luck. See you next time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next up is Duchess Maxi Store on Creek Road.
Go ahead.
Good evening, uh, Rich Renia, engineer for the applicant. Um, so we're, good to see everybody. I think we're at the end of the, the stretch here. Uh, we looked at the final comments. Um, we don't have anything new to add since the last time we were here two months ago. Um, so we have a couple of comments, uh, based on Eric's comments. I don't know if Eric wants to go through them first.
Ken, I can just let the board know that the applicant did receive the variances from the ZBA on Monday, so they're all set on that front?
Right, yeah, it's not much has changed since the presentation, so go ahead, Eric.
Sure. Um, yeah, there was a, a lot of items were clarified, many of our comments were satisfied, based on, uh, what was changed on the plan. Uh, some of the previous comments were updated to, um, uh, conform with the code and the intent of the comment. Uh, there was, I guess, we did hear this afternoon from the applicant with a couple of questions about, about, uh, one or two of the comments. Oh, it, aside from that, overall, we're recommending that the plan is ready for a condition approval.
Okay.
Uh, so we're, it's all set for that. Um, a couple of comments were raised. One was about the parking north of Building One, uh, which was a previous comment that we continued in this case. Um, I did, I was, it's, it's really the board's discretion. Uh, I did send the board a picture of, uh, the view of that end of the building. Um, and the thought, the thought was that it, the fire department did acknowledge it is not a fire apparatus access requirement. Um, the fire department did say that it would be preferred to have it wider for fire safety purposes. Um, so, uh, and I had recommended that the addition, that the spaces rather than being side by side, uh, that my comment, the language of my comment might have been a little ambiguous. I had meant them to be, the intent was, the suggestion up to the board was that rather than being side by spaces resulting in a narrow aisle, uh, that they be tandem lengthwise spaces uh, along the property line, which is, it's already shown as paving already on the site plan. Um, and the previous plan that showed diagonal spaces there provided for thirty-six feet in front of the garage door, that would be, that could be maintained. Um, so at least according to the information I saw on the plan, it wouldn't require any additional disturbance or negligible disturbance. Uh, I also looked at photos and it, you could see in the photos I sent to you, there's, um, a large hood along the side of the building there and a number of conduits. Um, so the thought was that it, it would be used, the, uh, you're reserving that four feet or so, three or four feet adjacent to the building would be better not to have vehicles there. The part, having large, you know, park, the parking can be accommodated and.
Yeah, there's lots of, uh, pavement there already.
Yeah, so that's, it's up to the board, uh, how you wanna handle that.
Yeah, and our question on that was, what, what, what does the fire district actually want that space for? Because we know that they're not gonna set up a, a fire truck there. If the building is on fire, that's too close. Um, and we do wanna keep the, the pavement up to the edge of the building the way it is now, just for, uh, housekeeping purposes.
I, I can't speak for the fire department. I just, we just have their comment. They said it would make it for safety.
In case they have to drive past it, I don't know.
Yeah.
May, may I weigh in just, just on that point briefly?
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you, sorry. Dean McGee, I'm, uh, attorney for the applicant. Um, I, I just wanted to note, because I, I did flag that, uh, for your counsel earlier. Uh, just because, you know, in February the fire district did say they had no comments and that, uh, access and egress was satisfactory. So we were surprised to see the updated comment. Um, I don't know what changed in the interim from the district's perspective, but if there is some, you know, leeway there from the board's perspective, we would, um, appreciate it. Uh, but I'll, I'll defer it and surrender.
I, I did try to reach, uh, Chris Bills this, uh, this afternoon and I wasn't able to reach him.
Okay. Well, I mean, I mean, we can, that could be conditional to, to look at that area, if they can make sure it's.
Yeah, so we're, we're open to, to do something there, but it'd just be handy to know exactly what type of vehicle do they wanna get through?
They can explain it, explain it to you and that could be, uh, done. All right, uh, anything else in there?
Uh, no, I think the rest is, uh, the rest is mostly cleaned up.
So the other question that I had, um, was on the parking. There was a comment about, um, twenty-four hour, uh, not to exceed twenty-four hours and no storage. And you were referring to seventeen of the parking spaces. I believe some of those parking spaces that you're referring to are some of our oversized parking spaces. Um, we have a lot of oversized. We have ones that are thirty feet deep, thirty-six feet deep, and then in the, the rear of the site, they're fifty feet deep. But I think that, um, a portion, that seventeen that you're counting, are some that are thirty-six feet deep. And the purpose of some of those spaces is that somebody may have a truck or a trailer parked in that if they are renting, um, a, a spot there or that they're, that they're renting, that it, it may be there for more than twenty-four hours, so we were concerned to see that. We don't wanna necessarily agree to the, the twenty-four hours if somebody's gonna have a, a truck or trailer that may sit there for a couple of days or maybe some equipment during the off-season.
Hmm, that makes sense.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that's.
The, the intent was just that, uh, the previous comment had been, uh, where was it?
Were you referring to like, uh, private, like, vehicles, like essentially someone was storing something, they went just like leave their car there?
Right, the idea was, vehicle, yeah, because they, the applicant had anticipated their, they, they've reserved a certain area for exterior storage and the zoning administrator had talked about, you know, marking out that area. And the previous comment had, had been reserving the parking spaces for parking, site use by, for parking and not for storage.
Right.
So the, the sign was an effort to achieve that.
Yeah, so if there's some flexibility on those larger spaces, we would appreciate that because there, there might not be a, a, a twenty-four hour turnover that the intent is that somebody can use them or those small businesses that we hope to attract here, uh, that they're actually using those spaces and not parking them in the neighborhoods.
Yeah, so if it's a, a tree service truck or something, they'll, they'll.
Exactly. Yeah, maybe they don't use it on Tuesday, but they use it on Thursday, so that's, that's part of the, the whole proposal here.
All right. Go to that. Um, you go to Bobby next?
Uh, I haven't been involved in this review, um, so Andy did the review. I kinda stepped back from it.
Yeah, the main thing was trying to make sure that disturbance was under an acre to avoid a SWIP and, uh, I think Andy's gone around with it a few times.
Oh, and I think he wanted a no SWIP note on the plan?
Okay.
I think before it was like.
Yeah, I, I looked at his comments. There was, uh, nothing that we couldn't deal with. I think he just wanted to ensure that all the disturbance goes back to disturbance. We have a, a chain link fence and where we weren't gonna have that, where we're gonna have some other type of fence.
Yeah, to make sure it's marked that, marked out that you don't disturb more than the acre.
Yes, exactly.
All right. At this point I move we open the public hearing?
Second.
Moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Proposed, motion passes. Anyone wish to comment on eighteen Creek Road, Maxi Store? Seeing now I move we close the public hearing?
Second.
Moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Proposed, motion passes, seven to zero. Let's go around the board for comments, uh, starting with you.
Yeah, I don't think there's any, there's too much left here. I, I did notice that, uh, the water department did have a, a note saying that backflow prevention had have been done on this property and needs to be done, so if you guys could get that done, that would be great. Other than that, I, I, I don't think there's anything left here.
I guess that would be a condition of approval anyway.
Yeah.
Uh, no additional comments.
Sure.
None.
See you, Bob.
Okay.
Peter? No, that's, gone through a few iterations of, of design and glad it sailed on something that, that we would for, in that contract we said we're going to.
I move the planning board grant conditional site plan and special use permit approval for the Duchess Maxi Stores to eighteen Creek Road project, subject to the written, subject to written responses by the applicant to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies and responses to be reviewed by the planning department as adequacy and completeness, inclusive of, not limited to the following, one through seven.
Second.
Moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Proposed, motion passes, seven to zero. Uh, is there any architectural review we'd like to do at this time? Or should we, uh? I mean, we saw, I guess we.
Yeah, we, we submitted what they were gonna be.
You guys have seen me, uh?
And we explained that the storage units in the back were gonna be more like a shipping container.
Yeah, the ship with the danger stuff.
Do we wanna discuss?
Do you know if they're, what type of shipping, uh, well, I shouldn't hold them derelict.
Yeah, no, they were gonna be, uh, new or once used, uh, the applicant said, which is basically new. It comes across the C ones.
Yep. We gotta stockpile those in this country at the moment.
Yes, yes. Uh, they'd be bolted down and I think we were talking at, uh, a tan color or, or a tone of a different color.
Sounds good. Anybody have any complaints about that?
No.
Adam or who?
Comments? Seeing, uh, it's acceptable to everyone, I move we accept architecture as presented.
Second.
Moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Proposed, motion passes, seven to zero. Good to go, finally.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Get through the conditions and move forward.
Thank you.
All right, next up is Eastdale Village Tobacco Store. Is that right next to the olive oil?
Next to the olive oil. Good evening, uh, again, uh, Mr. Chairman of the Board, uh, Jeff Kane, representing Eastdale Village. If I can share my screen. Yes, just to, uh, to orient the board. This is, uh, the, what we call the I block, uh, the, at the, on the last corner under construction, across the top of, uh, the screen here. You'll see. Better cursor. All right, you'll see, uh, right, uh, Route forty-four, Duchess Turnpike across the top and Eastdale Avenue South on the, on the side going up and down the screen here. So the I four building sits between, um, um, the Olive Store and the, uh, proposed wine stop. Um, really is a, uh, really is a, a retail building, uh, one of the uses as, as defined by the zoning administrator is that we need a, a tobacco store special use permit. This is, again, the approved elevations here. It's this, uh, elevation is the, is the one that we're talking about. The, the, the corner building which is off the side here and then just on the other side of, uh, this end building is low as it's under construction now. Just gonna orient you where you are with this interior building. Seven hundred and fifty-five square feet. Uh, we've presented the, in the application, I think, how we meet all the special permit requirements, uh, and look forward to any comments from the, from the board on us.
All right, thanks, Jeff. Eric?
I'll note that the town board last night reportedly approved a text amendment to make tobacco stores a use by special permit in the McDonald Heights District, uh, so the board may can, and so we're recommending that the applicant did provide an analysis of the special use criteria. Uh, we provided a recommend, it, it is subject to a public hearing tonight. Um, and we do have provided you with a secret resolution of consistency, uh, and a resolution for approval if you determine that it's ready. The zoning administrator did say that, uh, you should look at the performance standard on noxious uses and the applicant, the applications did describe, uh, some ventilation provisions to be provided.
Thanks, Eric.
Yeah, I, that was a question. So smoking is on site? Is that how it works? Uh, there is, uh, there is smoking allowed in the, uh, in the facility under New York State Health Department, um, regulation and control.
So I guess I just wanna make sure it's not affecting the apartments above.
Correct. Uh, what we've, what we've done here is created a box with closed cell insulation top and the sides and the ends so that the smoke won't go through the walls. And then we have an HVAC system under negative pressure, which means that it's always more blowing out than, uh, than, than, uh, than, than it's coming in. It goes up, uh, through a sealed pipe, uh, and exhausts in the roof. It's a, you know, a sealed chimney, not unlike we've done other places with restaurants. Uh, it's kind of the same thing. But that, that, that negative pressure is what really keeps the, keeps the smoke under control.
All right. Now you go to the olive oil store fairly often.
Now you can go to the olive oil store and then go to the wine store in between if you wanted to stop in the.
Yeah, not for me. All right, so, did you have any comments, Bobby?
No, we didn't.
Didn't think so. Let's go around the, oh, it is on pub, for public hearing, so I move we, the planning board open the special use permit public hearing?
Second.
Moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Proposed, motion passes. Anybody wish to comment on this application?
We're down to, uh, not many people.
Seeing now I move the planning board close the special use permit public hearing?
Second.
Moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Proposed, motion passes, seven to zero. Let's go around the board for comments, um, start with Bobby. Nothing?
I have one question?
Yep.
Is there gonna be a smoking room broken off from the tobacco sales part?
So let me, uh, share.
I can share that back up again. I saw couches and things. I see that smoking room portion.
So it's a small place. Again, it's seven hundred and fifty-five square. of history, is a, uh, is a specially permitted use in almost every district in the town.
Right.
So none of that changed. It's just that MHC was, for whatever reason, left out of the original zoning and it was added back in as a, uh, as, as an additional district in the districts that, that it can be specially permitted.
Right. I was looking for a clarification. So it can include vaping?
Absolutely. If it's nicotine, it can be vaping, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the, it, the, the, the definition does not differentiate between how it's administered.
There is no issue with the, uh, would vaping having to be any distance away from other, uh?
Well, that, I mean, they will have, they're, they're, they're built as part of the building permit. They have to meet certain Department of Health criteria, right?
Yes, and, and there are requirements and regulations related to business between a tobacco store and schools and daycares and.
This meets all of those.
Right, right. That, that I understood, but I, I wasn't sure if there were any additional constraints once you added vaping. No, okay.
Yeah, which I don't think they're intending to do anyway.
But no, I mean, never, part of the reason why tobacco stores was added as a use in the zoning code, uh, different than just retail use, was because of the number of vape and smoke shops that have been opening up around the town. It was a feeling that it would, might be better to at least raise the bar a little bit.
Right.
Uh, so it's not just so easy to open them up like in any retail space. And so, um, this is obviously something different, but that's, that, that is back to the origin of, of when the zoning was changed originally, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Rocko, if it helps, the definition for tobacco or nicotine product says any product in leaf, flake, plug, liquid, or any other form containing nicotine.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Anything, uh?
Uh, well, I, what are your hours going to be for this particular retail?
I don't know.
You don't know? Okay. I'm very curious because there's a cigar outlet off of Route Nine in Fishkill, right? And they tend to have late night hours there. So I'm just wondering if that would be the case here or not, or if it'd be more of like a eight to five, eight to six, like some of the other retail stores that are next to it.
Um, not a, not a, yeah, I, I, I don't know. Not a question I've heard asked or or answered on this. I, I, yeah, right, I, we can, we can provide some clarity on the, on a, on a plan at some point if that's helpful.
All right.
You just gotta be mindful of people living upstairs there. It's doesn't, I don't think it's a noisy use.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know. I don't know though, right, if you have a nice group of people that go in to have some cigars or some, I don't know. Maybe not.
Remember, it's two doors down, two doors down from Lola's with, uh, with, right, they're gonna have an active.
But isn't Lola's open only during the day? I mean, do they ha, are they open for dinner? I thought they're just more like a cafe, right? Don't they just have like cafe hours?
Yeah, I, I don't know that this location is gonna be the same as the other location.
It's gonna be big.
The, the other Lola's restaurant you called is, is open at night.
Oh, is it?
There are, there are.
Okay, so maybe it's just the one in the city of Poughkeepsie, that's like that, okay.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, I have another silly question. Uh, it, it's gonna come across as being silly. I, is there anything in the code that would prohibit, uh, people to bring a flask of, let's say, a cigar malt by Dalmore or something into, uh, into, imbibe it while they're smoking the cigar?
Right, no, that's a really good question.
I think that.
Uh, because there are, there are products out there that are sold specifically to go with the, uh, with the enjoyment of having, uh, a, a cigar.
I don't know that there's any specific rules about carrying your own personal flask of, something if that's something that you wanted to do. I mean, uh, I don't think they.
But it can't be sold without a license.
I don't think they're selling it, you know, without a liquor license, right?
Right, I know, but, uh, uh, there, I, there are, for instance, uh, in the restaurant industry, if I'm not mistaken, that if you don't have a, a wine and beer license, they can, uh, allow you to.
To bring your own.
Bring in, uh, your own. So I was just curious. I, I know that this is not a bar, but that would be a logical thing for some people to might want. So that's why I said that. It sounds like, uh, maybe the council, our, our council.
So, you, in New York State, you can now open a cigar bar and sell liquor at them?
Right.
But, um, there's nothing that would prohibit someone from bringing whatever and enjoying it as part of the thing unless this board as a condition of the special use permit felt that there was some deleterious effect from, you know, allowing people to sit and sip and smoke.
Well, well, I think we ought to, uh, consider that. I mean, you know, i, i, is the board, uh, agreed to that or are they opposed to, to that?
I think that would be all right. It's, it's generally a walkable community there and, and, uh.
I mean, I, I guess it's up to you if you wanna wade into that. I don't know that it's, you know, um, if, if it's necessary to do so. I mean, uh, you know, I imagine the purveyor has some idea of what they want to do there and, you know, you stay on those.
Well, I don't know. That was a loophole. That's why I was curious.
I don't know if it's, yeah.
Uh, y, y, you know, for me, it's an, uh, it's for my own knowledge and for, uh, uh, for my own edification, when something like this comes up again.
Yep.
Because it's, it's an open question and it could be a, a, a very, uh, nice loophole.
I guess as a consequential, given that there's restaurants such as perhaps Lola's that sell alcohol and may not permit tobacco indoors.
Right, no, I understand that.
So here you'll have a place that would allow smoking indoors, um, and the alcohol's not regulated.
Well, the reason I, I really ask is that having worked in the, uh, liquor retails side, uh, I, I had a lot of clients come in specifically asking which ones of, of the brown liquors especially would go well with certain cigars. That, that's what prompted me to ask them. And because it is, uh, that there are a lot of people who do enjoy both at the same time.
Yeah, cognac and a, and a cigar.
Cognac, a single malt. Dalmore's a single malt. Scotch for, uh, for, uh, example, has a cigar malt. It's not inexpensive. It's about a hundred and fifty dollars, uh, a, a seven fifty, but the people will get together, throw a little party at a house.
Yeah.
Buy a bottle and they'll smoke and go drink.
It's, it's, yeah, but it's not. Yeah, it's just a couple of couches and, uh, sitting area. It's not a big space.
I can see one for six people right there. They can easily, uh, cover a bottle like that. Okay, I said enough.
I don't think we wanna prohibit that, uh, if somebody wanted to do that.
We know what Rocko's doing in his spare time. We know what you're doing in your spare time.
No, I don't, I don't, I'm not, I'm not a smoker, so.
Anything, uh?
Uh, no.
All right, Peter?
No.
Yeah, I'm good with that. As long as you have the exhaust, as you said, and do that properly.
All right, I move that the planning board find the application for the Eastdale Village Building I-4 Tobacco Store Special Use Permit involves incremental changes to the Eastdale Village project of knowledgeable magnitude and scope that are non-significant and consistent with the previous seeker findings adopted March 15, 2018, and amended September 17, 2020, as modified by the proposed Eastdale Village application received March 24, 2025.
Second. Moved to the second for seeker. All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed. Motion passes.
Move the planning board determine that the proposed Building I-4 Tobacco Store use is consistent with 210-111 dot one supplementary regulations for tobacco stores and with 210-152 dot one special use permit criteria and standards of the application is consistent with and requires no changes to the approved Eastdale Village 26 amended site plan. Now the planning board therefore grant special use permit approval to the Eastdale Village Building I-4 Tobacco Store Special Use Permit application subject to the following one through two.
Second. Moved to the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed. Motion passes. Seven zero. Good to go.
Thank you, Lynn, as always. Thank you for your help.
Good to see the continued build out there. We have a couple of, uh, adjournments.
Inwood Avenue Town Homes, I move the planning board adjourn the public hearing to May 15, 2025.
Second.
Moved to second. It all in favor?
Aye.
Proposed. Motion passes. Spark Car Wash, I move the planning board adjourn the public hearing to May 15, 2025.
Second.
Moved to second. It all in favor?
Aye.
Proposed. Motion passes. Anyone wish to comment on remaining agenda items?
Move second.
Moved to second. It all in favor?
Aye.
Proposed. Motion passes. Anyone wish to comment on remaining items tonight?
No one else here.
Seeing none, I move we continue the meeting.
Second.
Moved to second. It all in favor?
Aye.
Proposed. Motion passes. Anyone wish to comment on remaining items tonight?
No one else here.
Seeing none, I move we continue the meeting.
Second.
Moved to second. It all in favor?
Aye.
Proposed. Motion passes. Anyone wish to comment on remaining items tonight?
No one else here.
Seeing none, I move we continue the meeting.
Second.
Moved to second. It all in favor?
Aye.
Proposed. Motion passes. Seven zero. Next up is 30th, 34 Mary Avenue Lot Line Revision. I'm just here for that. There you go. Fairly straightforward, just looking at the tobacco.
Good evening. Um, my name is Brendan Johnson. I'm the land surveyor for the applicants. Um, so essentially, we're a family-run business, not really a business, um, operation here. And the, um, the owner, Edward Junior at 34 Mary Avenue is, uh, looking to convey a small wedge of land, almost 3,000 square feet, to his father, Edward Junior, or Edgar Taylor Senior, at 30 Mary Avenue. Um, we went through all the comments and there wasn't too much. Um, I already revised the title and I added the septic for both lots, um, to show that there is no conflict there.
Okay, good. All right, um, Kristen?
I was pleasantly short. Thank you. Um, it's on for a lot line revision review, uh, for seeker purposes. It's a type two action. There are standard notes in our town code, uh, for lot line revision. Um, there's just, there's a whole chapter on lot line, uh, revisions and alterations. So, um, I basically cut and paste the code sections that are applicable for, um, making sure we have deeds all squared away, um, to be reviewed by the town, town board, town planning board council. Give you an upgrade or promotion. Um, and so it, it's, it's really, uh, you know, on for discussion with the planning board. It's fairly straightforward. Yeah, they're looking to convey, uh, about 2,600 square feet from the one property to the other. Um, and then, yeah, I appreciate you getting the sewer on there and then, um, you'll work with them. Uh, just so the board's aware, uh, the, the way that it works in the, um, lot line revision chapter in our town code is that you have a grant, um, we can do a conditional approval and then I also built in the maximum time permitted, uh, via the maximum, uh, extension. Uh, so essentially that, that gives them about, I think it's 180 days or 120 days or 180 days, um, to file. But in any case, it moves the filing date out to Friday, August 15th. So, um, should give you plenty of time to get all the paperwork in order, work with, um, the county health department, um, if there are any issues. This way you just have the time. I think that there, there may have been a zoning, um, issue that you would have to address, so you'd be able to take care of that in six months' time, hopefully, as well, so.
It'd be much faster than that.
Yeah.
They're, they're in a hurry.
Yeah, there you go. Um, so that's it.
All right, yep. Looks like, uh, Mr. Parker's RV has its own way in there. Any comments from board members on this?
I just have one, uh, question. The flag lot has frontage of 24.82 feet. Is that, do they have a variance, you know, for that?
I think this flag lot pre-dates.
Existing non-conforming?
Yeah, but I would call that.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, uh, the chair have prohibited now, so.
Okay.
Without, uh, at least 75 feet of frontage, I think.
We did talk about that, right?
Yeah, but, uh, this has been here a while.
All right, it's just, I don't have any concern with it. It seems, it seems straightforward. I don't think there's a variance or, or anything that we're gonna change, but still have to address that.
They're gonna, yeah, they're gonna move the shed. It's not a foundation or anything. So those.
And the leach field is not in any of the area being, uh?
No, leach field for 30 is just in front of the house. Um, they're on municipal water, so that's not a concern. And then on 34, the leach field is right behind the gazebo.
Yeah, that looks, I see it's square there now.
Yeah.
So as long as you're not, as long as you're not conveying part of that.
Yeah.
Then we're good.
Okay. I move the planning board determine that the proposal meets the criteria for site seeker type two action pursuant to seeker part 617 dot 5C 16. No further environmental review is required.
Second. Moved to the second for seeker. All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed. Motion passes. Seven zero.
I move the planning board grant conditional lot line revision approval and also grant a one-time 60-day time extension as permitted by town code. A set approval from Monday, June 16, 2025 forward to Friday, August 15, 2025, subject to the following one through eight.
Second. Moved to the second to grant conditional. All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed. Motion passes. Seven zero. Last up, we have a request from Serenity Greens to be discussed. Kristen?
Yeah, so the, the, uh, yeah, the applicant is here.
Come on down, man.
Yeah, right, I know. You did sit through the meeting and go with Kansas B.
Go ahead.
Good evening. Jason Litzrich from JL Architecture.
Jasper Tsing from Serenity Greens.
My Tsing from Serenity Greens.
All right. At, at first, just wanna, uh, thank the board for, for putting us on the agenda for this evening and, uh, listening to, you know, why we're here. Uh, we are looking to amend the, uh, previous conditional approval, uh, for the crosswalk that was proposed. Um, it's turned into a little bit of a hardship and, uh, I believe Kristen had, uh, sent out a letter kinda stating the purpose of our, uh, being here tonight.
Yep, so I did, I did share the memo from the applicant, um, and, and it outlines, um, anticipated costs. And just a little bit more background, that staff did meet, ultimately, our director of municipal development, myself, the applicant, and DOT did meet to discuss if there were possible.
Good to go.
Thank you.
Thanks for holding it down here.
I know, you sat here for...
Get to see some interesting projects. Alright, next up, it's Guardian Self-Storage Time Extension.
I move the planning board grant two ninety-day time extensions for the Guardian Self-Storage Love Road application, moving the current approval expiration date from April 12, 2025, to October 9, 2025.
Second. Moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes, seven to zero. Last up, we have a request from Serenity Greens to be discussed, Kristen?
Yeah, so the, the, yeah, the applicant is here, huh?
Come on down, man.
Yeah, right, I know, you did sit through the meeting and go with Kansas Bean.
Good evening, Jason Lutrick from DL Architecture.
Jasper Lee Singh from Serenity Greens.
And Mike Singh from Serenity Greens.
Alright. At first, just want to thank the board for, for putting us on the agenda for this evening, and listening to, you know, why we're here. We are looking to amend the previous conditional approval for the crosswalk that was proposed. It's turned into a little bit of a hardship, and I believe Kristen had sent out a letter kind of stating the purpose of our being here tonight.
Yep, so I did, I did share the memo from the applicant, and, and it outlines anticipated costs. And just a little bit more background, that staff did meet, ultimately, our Director of Municipal Development, myself, the applicant, and DOT did meet to discuss if there were possible alternatives, you know, inclusive of potentially moving this to a later portion of the development of the project. But ultimately, that opens up a can of worms in terms of liability, and DOT just was not amenable to that, right? So, they're, they're bound by their own rules. And so, the applicant is looking to amend their resolution in, in an attempt to remove the conditions specifically related to the planning board's request for the crosswalk across South Gate Drive, and, and, you know, the pedestrian improvement on this property to, to said crosswalk.
Alright, thanks, Kristen. People are going to walk there anyway. It's, it's a shame that it's, that it can't be put in place, that it gets that expensive.
I'm just a quick question, did the DOT take a position on whether or not there should be a crosswalk at that intersection or not?
No, the, the, the concern actually at their first review of the project was to just close that corner entirely with no pedestrian improvement. They wanted it to be closed. And, and that was, that was the first go-around of comments. And then, once the planning board had requested the crosswalk across South Gate Drive, obviously, they were tasked with placing in the appropriate connection from the building to that corner and beyond. And then, that's when it's within the DOT right of way and opened up.
So, they never took a position or made a recommendation about the crosswalk, so...
Not explicitly, no.
Other than if it's, if it's done, then you need all this...
Is your question, did the DOT say this was, that there was a pedestrian crosswalk needed there?
Yes.
The answer to that is no.
No. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I guess we're, we're seeing it from the fact that in front of the deli, there's like kind of a preformed slab, like a bus stop area, and that would be...
I just, again, the reason I asked that question, and I just wanted to have it on the record, but I think we've got to be very careful about establishing a precedent for people who claim an economic hardship. And, but now you're telling me, I'm reassured, by you're telling me that the DOT did not recommend the crosswalk.
Correct.
So, I think...
Yeah, it was, it's from our, from our viewpoint of trying to get to that bus stop, but then I found out, I think, I think with your research, that it's not an official bus stop on the...
Correct, the closest bus stop that I could find, I mean, I did go take a look at the bus schedules, and I couldn't find anything relating to South Gate Drive. The closest stop I found was actually to the north, at just south of Neptune Road, south of the Dunkin' Donuts lot, and there's no pedestrian connections, there's no sidewalk, bus shelter, nothing. People are standing in the grass with a bus stop pole.
And that's unfortunate, you know? And I, I can tell you that there is a slew of children that live at that first street right behind the deli, that cross that road, they walk through the parking lot, they go to Dunkin' Donuts, they go through all those parking lots. It's just a shame that there's no, you know, sidewalk, it's, it's very sad, so...
But, I mean, being that you're not changing the building, we determined that there was no way to put a sidewalk in front of it as well, because of the narrow, and the things in the way there. So, that's, that's where we're at. Any other comments from Board members?
Alright. I move the planning board amend its prior conditional site plan approval for Serenity Green 2245 South Road to eliminate the requirement for a crosswalk across South Gate Drive, and the proposed pedestrian connection from the existing site building to the crosswalk.
Second. Moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Appreciate you. So, good night.
Any other bits before the board? Seeing none, terminate the meeting?
Second.
Moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes, seven to zero, over and out.
Good night, everyone.